Chief Brent is there? Well, I mean, Steve can walk. So council is 7:02. We do have a quorum, so I will call the meeting to order. I did want to know at the beginning of the meeting, a couple of items, just because we have had some technical difficulties in the past. So I did reach out to the Vermont Leagues of Cities and Towns, and they have on their website actually a toolkit to assist municipalities with the hybrid meetings like we have been having. And since we have elected to have the meetings hybrid, the law does not state that we need to have it run full time. I mean, we have to note that the video could go down at any time. And if that were to happen, there's a quorum of council here. We could elect to continue to move forward if we want to. But that we do set a precedent, because we do list on our agendas that it will be hybrid. So I think a lot of the times we're going to make the decision, things can be deferred, right? So and we've done that before. We had a number of items that were on there. The other option that we did, we tried switching around computers and we allowed people that were both here and remote to still be in attendance. Wasn't the best meeting for sure, but we just made sure that it was in accordance with the law. So one other thing to know is there is the chat in the side. We stopped noting this when we were coming back in person, but just for the public to be aware, the chat is not for conversation. Conversation is really here. The chat on the side is really to let us know if there's an issue that you can't be heard, or you can't hear us, something like that, so that we can address that issue and try to make the corrections here. And one thing that we have not been doing that we're going to have to do, there are some councils that are remote. So anytime that we do have a vote and it's not unanimous, we're going to have to take a roll call vote. And that's just one thing that we'll have to do moving forward. So I wanted to mention those as we start off the new year, we are making sure that we're trying to do it correctly in accordance with the law. So with that, item number two is adjustments to the agenda. Is there anything for adding or removing from this agenda?
I have nothing.
Okay, hearing and seeing none. Then I'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
We do have a list of licenses that are included on the consent agenda. Food establishment licenses for Basil's Pizzeria, Jerry's Sports Tavern, Morris Block Deli and Tops, Cornerstone, Two Local Guys, and AR Market. Food vending licenses for Morris Block Deli and Cornerstone/Two Local Guys. And we've got a vehicle for hire service operators and vehicle license for Pay Less Taxi for two vehicles. And vehicle for hire driver's license for Dale Q, who is Pay Less Taxi. We also have an entertainment license application for Berry Partnership. All of them have the appropriate department approvals.
Okay, and those are a part of the consent agenda unless anyone wanted to remove anything from that. Hearing and seeing none. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And opposed, nay. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to the city clerk controversy part.
Hello. Just to follow up on the licenses that were just approved, Pay Less Taxi, of course, has done business in the city for a long time. I know there have been some conversations recently about the need for transportation after hours with regards to, you know, when the public transportation runs between downtown Berry and the hospital or the medical complex up on the hill. I spoke with Dale when he came in to drop his licenses off, saying, hey, you ought to reach out to the hospital, get your name up there. He said that he has done that several times, and he has found them to be very difficult to get any payment out of. And so he will not reach out to them and provide that service any longer. So just wanted to share that because I know that's something that has been discussed. Couple other things. Continuing reminder that town meeting materials are available on the website. Lists of offices up for election on Town Meeting Day, consent of candidate forms, nominating petitions. I will say that they have been changing because as things become clearer with regards to the Central Vermont Career Center vote, that it's a bit of a moving target, but we're getting that nailed down. There is an at-large position on that proposed school board, should the voters approve the creation of that school district. And we're getting, we're getting those bits and pieces nailed down. So next week, we have a special meeting at six o'clock for the council to review the proposals that have been received for articles on the ballot for funding requests. We've received the same 22 that we have this past year that were all approved by voters. It's the exact same dollar amount. And I sent it around once before, and I will do it again. All the packets of materials have been posted in the shared drive. There's a folder there for voter-approved project folders for the different, for the 22 different organizations. Because there's so much paperwork, I'm not going to be providing it individually for next week's meeting. But I will have just a list of the organizations and the funding amounts. So I would ask the counselors to review the materials in advance. We'll go from there. And lastly, of course, the legislature started today. Already have been spending quality time with Senate government operations. They spent today, a chunk of today, working on the emergency legislation, emergency election legislation, which is S-172. They passed it out of committee in like the fastest bill passing in record. It'll go to the full Senate tomorrow. It's to House GovOps before the end of the week. I'm scheduled to testify with them on Friday. There's not much in there that's going to affect Berry City, but there certainly is the language about the possibility of empowering municipalities to move their elections to, their town meeting elections to a different date, or to hold their elections by Australian ballot instead of floor vote to protect their citizens. Are the two big things that are in the bill that towns have been asking for. So we're expecting that to sail through. Other things, H-444, which is our charter change, is out of Senate rules and is in Senate GovOps. They're taking that up before the end of this week. So we're hoping that that gets fast-tracked too. The most significant thing, or the most timely thing that I'm concerned about is that it's what eliminates the first constable position. And at the moment, we need to elect a first constable in March. So trying to get that nailed down before the nominating petitions are due. S-169, which is a new bill, Representative Anthony has been working with the money committees to get a bill drafted associated with the refund from the Ed Fund that we need, that was identified through our TIF audit. It's a little over $20,000, and that has to come through the legislature. So that has been drafted. And there was discussion at the beginning about open meeting laws and what's required for doing online meetings or hybrid meetings. There's going to be a lot of discussion in the legislature this year about open meeting and about making adjustments to accommodate virtual and hybrid meetings. Coming out of the last year and a half, there's a lot of interest in making some of those changes. So that's it.
So just a reminder for mailing in ballots this year, everyone still has the option to do absentee.
Yep.
And we could still do ballot to everyone if we wanted to.
Could if we wanted to. That's a lot of money.
It is.
Yeah. My intention is to mail out a postcard to everybody, just giving everybody the information that they can go online or call into the office to request a ballot for all of the elections this year. We have at least three because we've got the August primary and the November general election. So that's, that's the intention to plant that seed. That's similar to what we did last year. The only difference being that last year we mailed out the postcards and the postcards included a postage-paid tear-off coupon that they mailed back indicating that they wanted a ballot sent to them. Those are really, really expensive. We got CARES money last year that paid for that. It's all on us this year, and I'm not interested in spending $2,000 to $3,000 just on that postcard. So.
So I just wanted to make sure council is aware of that. And no concerns. The only other thing I would add before I see if anybody else has questions is we did have our representatives in for legislative update. I was able to follow up with our senators with the information that we did talk about at that meeting. The only other item that actually wasn't mentioned at the meeting was S-33, which is the TIF district time period to incur debt. And we did reach out to the senators because it is a bill that was from the Senate. They will be looking to, I believe, tack it on to a different bill.
Yeah, because S-33 was passed, so they need to start over.
So I just wanted to let you know that those items have been conveyed to our senators as well as the communication that we had with our representatives. And anybody else have any questions for the clerk? Counselor Hemrick?
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Clerk Bellows. Just one question to, I'm not sure if I heard it quite right. But you said you are intending to send out postcards to anyone that would like to request an absentee ballot. They could do it so that way, but not to send the full ballot out, right?
That's certainly my recommendation. My intention is to send a postcard to all of our active voters. It would be, it's the same mailing list that we could send ballots out to. But, but my recommendation is we do the postcards instead, which is similar to what we did last year. Last year, that certainly paid off for us. We ended up with about two-thirds to three-quarters of our voters voting absentee and only about 400 coming in person. So my, my hope is that we end up with a similar kind of ratio.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Anything for liquor control? Nope. And moving on to the city manager.
I have nothing to add to my written report that I submitted over the weekend.
Any questions for the manager? Hearing and seeing none. Onto visitors and communications. There's a person here who wants to talk about an item not on the agenda. There's a microphone over here if you want to.
Oh, there's no chair.
Yeah.
My name is Ellen Silverett.
They should be able to pick you up. That's fine.
Thanks. I apologize for reading, but I'm not a good professional speaker. So it's probably best for you if I just read this. I wanted to report that there has been an uptick in drug activity in my neighborhood. I live on Elm Street, just above the intersection with Tremont Street, and I have lived there for 40 years. I've seen drug activity here before, but the increase in the past three months is alarming to me. This problem is also occurring on Upper Park Street, and both these areas are in Ward 2. The police have been very responsive, and I would like to thank them. They're making a tremendous effort to address this issue. But as you know, it's a very difficult problem. And I'm bringing this up tonight in hopes that the council will make it a point to keep updated on the situation and that they will work to support the police in their efforts. If we want to renew Berry, this isn't a trend that we want to see. And after 40 years here, I really do see a more orchestrated and bold activity than I've ever seen before in my area. So I think, you know, not everyone lives in the same spot or has the same problems. But I thought the whole council should be aware of this and know that the police are trying very hard to respond to this problem.
So Ellen, I thank you for coming in. Just so everybody is aware, Ellen's daughter contacted me about a similar issue. I don't know if it was the same exact building. But we did reach out to our acting police chief, Larry, and he's going to be working with me to try to set up the neighborhood watch in that area.
Well, we have a very good one. It's just a matter of.
Right. I mean, convening the group to come together.
Yeah.
And I know that some people aren't aware of the group, so we can try to do this and we can try to use this as part of that promotion in order for people to be aware that the neighborhood watches are still out there. They're still active.
Yeah.
And we can set up a time so that we can gather some more information about the buildings in question.
Well, not just one building. I think it's a problem citywide. I've heard from several people in several neighborhoods, not just my ward. And that if you personally haven't had that experience, maybe that you should be aware that it's something that I think the city council should, you know, if you really want to make this effort with Berry, need to keep this under control. Yes.
Well, I think Council Booton's hand was up first.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. Go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, if Ellen wanted to go first, did she have her hand up to talk about something else?
No, I'm not going to wander, as I said. I kind of said my thoughts, so you have other business.
Oh, no, no, no. I wanted to follow up with what you said. I actually also had a conversation with your daughter as well. And she brought up something that I talked about, you know, six, eight years ago, about a nuisance abatement ordinance. And I want to say thank you publicly for, I want to say thank you to her publicly for, for doing that. And I'm going to look into that. I don't know. It's, she gave me a couple of references, and in fact, one of them was Rome, New York, which is the one ordinance that I looked at back then. And I don't know if Lucas, you remember having that conversation?
We actually tried to have some more conversations around our housing board of review. It was around different ways that landlords could use people that were convicted of drug activity to be evicted from those properties so that those, one, it frees up, free up housing for more individuals. But two, it would make it so that the landlords could rent out that space to another person. We did not succeed in our attempt at the legislature to get more legislation around that. The legislature actually did not approve our authority, which an ordinance would have been able to give more teeth to that group.
Yep. And now I remember that. I, I remember talking, I said that to her, and I can't, told her I couldn't remember the reason why we dropped it. And that was the reason why, was because when we put it to the state legislature, the state legislature once again failed us.
I just want to explain, my daughter's an attorney, and she's worked all over the world, and she is, happens to be here zooming her work and is with me. So that's how she became aware of the issues that I'm having.
So what has made most of the difference? Would you say the neighborhood watch is very helpful, or mostly the police are helpful? Or are there other factors you can think of?
Both. There's a liaison, the police has a liaison with the neighborhood watch, and that has been incredibly, incredibly helpful. So I'd say that was the biggest asset to me personally.
Counselor Wazzaq?
Yeah, never mind. I just took my hand down. Thank you.
So I wasn't making this about me and my problems. I just wanted to make the council aware that it's an issue you might want to keep track of.
Sure. Thank you for doing so.
Counselor Hemrick passes.
Yeah, one more. Counselor Hemrick, before you go, Ellen.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ellen, for sharing. And it does sound like this is an issue citywide. And there was a similar issue in my neighborhood. And, and one thing that we did in our neighborhood watch was look on the rental registry to see if that property was registered as a rental property, and it was not, which triggered an inspection by the health officer. And so, you know, I'm not, and we also had a great meeting with the police chief and detective. And they did a few drive-bys, and it really, that did make a difference in that case, but I'm not sure if that would make it, you know, the difference in every case. But I think to the extent, one lesson learned is that when departments coordinate across ordinances to use whatever leverage point that they can, it seemed to help. And I also reached out to the landlord personally, who, they were Berrytown landlords, and I think those conversations were effective in that case. The manager, McKenzie, is that type of interdepartmental coordination happening in instances like this where we're checking if there's a suspected drug house, if they're in compliance with the the minimum housing standards and rental registry ordinances?
Frankly, I'm not sure. I would think that based on what was taken, undertaken, you know, on the Cam Street area, that that process would continue, but I can follow up.
Yeah, and in this case, we haven't mentioned the location yet, so we'd have to verify that this particular building that we're talking about is one that has been looked at in other ways. This just came to my attention over the holiday weekend. So I was only able to talk to our acting chief yesterday about it. So.
And like I said, it isn't about me in this one situation. I think my neighbors up above on Park Street are having the same scenarios going on. So it's, you know, it's not just about one person. It's a bigger issue.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So counsel, I'm just. Counsel, just to follow up on that, just as a note, we are approaching the record number of overdoses this year. I don't know if that actually came out as a statistic or not to be finalized, but just to note that it is something that's not just a Berry City issue. It's actually a statewide issue that we need to. Counselor Boone, was your hand up again?
Yeah, it was. I was just going to say thank you to Ellen, and it's definitely, even though we didn't move forward with it before, it's something that we can bring up again. Your daughter made some good points, so I'll be following up.
Okay. Is there anything else for visitors and communications? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor Reel, I actually just want to ask you, you had a flyer that you sent out recently for the Aldridge Library and the warming shelter?
I can bring that up. So Aldridge Library has recently opened up with the graciousness their mil room for a warming shelter in the mornings. I believe it's open, and I'm going off memory here because I'm kind of caught off guard, from eight to 11. They are offering coffee and a warm place to stay until the library opens. It's staffed Monday through Saturday with a person. People can get information about local resources. They can fill out, they have help with forms and applications. It's a place to charge your phone. It's a place just to have a place just to warm up while it's cold outside, because we all know it's been cold outside. And they, the library opens, I believe at 11, so they're allowed to stay until the library closes. I have recently spoke to the director of Aldridge Library. They said it's been a slow start, but numbers are actually growing to come to visit the library. And right now, the homelessness task force is working on a local resource list for folks. So we have actually a hands-on resource list for the area. So we know where exactly folks can go for food shelves, camping gear, et cetera. So that'll be forthcoming. But yeah, it's going great right now. Like I said, it's slow going, but numbers are going up and people are using it. So it's exciting for this ballot project.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Seeing nothing else for visitors and communications. There is no old business, so we'll jump into new business. And the first item is 9A. This is the briefing on the OSHA emergency standard and policy, and this is regarding employee vaccination mandate.
Rick Taft and I worked last week to develop the policy. It has been distributed to the staff. I'm going to turn to Rick to just give an overview of the policy. Its effective date is for the vaccination documentation is January 9, which I believe is Sunday. So effectively, it's Friday. And then there's a testing component that goes with that. I'll turn that over to Rick.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Carol, I'll save you some pen work. I'll send you my notes after. So as Steve mentioned, this OSHA COVID-19 emergency temporary standard, it's been on our radar, and it's, it kind of got to stay in the Circuit of Appeals courts. And the Sixth Circuit of Appeals basically allowed it to pass, which it's now being appealed up to the Supreme Court, but there currently isn't a stay on it, which means that it is law until there's either a stay or the Supreme Court overrules it. So we are prepping with the intent that this is in fact going forward. If there is a stay, then it'll be paused, but we are, we are in the process of making sure everything is in place to make it happen. By January 10, the deadline is January 9 for us to receive everybody's vaccination cards. But this actually goes into effect on January 10. We're required under OSHA 1910.501 to comply with this because we have over 100 employees. Some of the highlights of this standard are the employer is required to have the standard by January 10. Requires an employer to provide up to four hours of paid time if someone chooses to get a vaccination. It allows the use of sick time if there's a side effect of the vaccination. And part of this is the city is not required to provide testing to employees that are not fully vaccinated. However, Chief Brent and Deputy Chief Alsworth were able to secure a federal program that will supply us up to 30 rapid tests per week that we will be able to use as a courtesy for our employees. If we have a positive rapid test, they will be required to leave the facility and get a PCR test for confirmation of the results. The CDC currently defines fully vaccinated as two weeks after receiving two doses of either the Pfizer or Moderna vaccination, or one dose of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccination. So the standard requires the employer to track all of our employees and their current vaccination status. In order to do that, we created a tracking spreadsheet. We're requiring employees to submit copies, photos, scans of their vaccination cards directly to me, not to anybody else. This, this is to try to stay in compliance with any HIPAA guidelines and protect privacy. And if they're not vaccinated, there is an appendix in the program for them to sign. It's basically a declination form saying that they are not going to get vaccinated because we, we need to figure out how many people we need to test. This process is currently underway. We've currently asked staff to submit these cards. About one-third of our total employees have already reported in, and those are being tracked. Tomorrow afternoon, I'll finish a report, send it out to each department head outlining who has not yet either provided proof of vaccination or filled out a declination form, so that department heads have Thursday and Friday to follow up with people to make sure we get those. We're currently tracking four levels of vaccination. There's fully vaccinated with a booster, fully vaccinated, partially vaccinated, and no vaccination. The reason that we're tracking fully vaccinated with a booster is because I believe, and I think anybody who's been paying attention believes, that it's just a matter of time before CDC changes their guidelines to say that a booster is going to be required to be considered fully vaccinated. And if I'm tracking it now, I'll be able to quickly tell. And if I'm tracking it now, I'll be able to quickly tell who needs to get a booster or start testing or who doesn't. Um so the thought was to be proactive and track that now instead of waiting and having to go back and figure it out later. There is already in place, the manager has instituted a masking mandate for all city facilities. And city vehicles, if there's more than one occupant. With the exception of if you're in your office alone or if you're eating, you are to be required, you are required to be wearing a mask. So the masking part of this mandate really isn't going to change anything for steady staff. It's really just gonna be people needing to get tested if they're not fully vaccinated. The policy's gone out, I'm hearing. Pros and cons from our employees, but I think all in all, everybody understands that this is a federal mandate and we don't. Um this isn't something that we have any choice in at this point, so. Um I'll open it up if anybody has any questions, I tried to keep it quick and high level.
Councillor Boone?
Yeah, uh so with one-third of our staff chiming in, uh do we have an idea of what the percentage of vaccinated versus unvaccinated?
Um no, because the staff that have chimed in have all been vaccinated and sent cards. Um I do know that we do have some people that aren't vaccinated. Um I know that we have at least one employee who has a medical exemption to being vaccinated. Um but they still will be able to be tested, so there. We did build into the, into the standard or into our policy, we built in the ability for a religious exemption or a medical. Exemption if need be for anybody and accommodations. Um testing, you know, I, I don't see a medical exemption to testing, possibly I guess. But more so if somebody had a religious exemption, um it is built in there, they can apply for it, um it would come to me. And then I would work with the city manager to, to verify and, and get approval on it, so.
Just out of curiosity, do you have an idea of how many do you think are employees that are do not, that are not vaccinated versus those that are? Because I know for National Life, we're hovering around ninety percent.
I'm, I'm guessing we're probably higher than ninety percent vaccinated. Um I know we have a few that aren't vaccinated. Um my goal or my hope is that it's less than thirty because that's all the tests that we're allowed to get per week. But um yeah, I'm, I'm guessing we're higher than ninety percent vaccinated in the city.
Cool.
William Tobart?
Yes, uh I know that you've indicated that OSHA has this mandate out there, but. The requirement of vaccination is actually a violation of federal law. In that the Nuremberg Code has been codified through the code, the Helsinki Code, which is actually in. Um federal statute that vaccinations cannot be required if under. Um when they are medically experimental and there are no vaccinations that have been. Actually approved by the FDA in the United States. The only one that has been approved is not available in the United States. So. Is that something that the council is looking at in terms of? The vaccination requirement?
Uh let me. Yeah, I'm gonna defer to the manager for that specific question, because this has been implemented by staff, not council.
Yeah, um well, but it's implemented in, by staff in response to a federal directive. Um and the.
The federal directives in violation of, may be in violation of federal law.
Bill, uh we haven't, we haven't done a legal analysis, that's frankly above our pay grade. Uh the, the policy doesn't require you to get vaccinated. It basically says, tell us if you are vaccinated and you don't need to be tested. If you have chosen not to get vaccinated, then you need to be tested, so. The, the policy that we have isn't requiring people to get man, uh to get test, vaccinated. Uh so the flexibility is still with the employee, uh and at least at my level, I don't see any conflict.
Any other questions? So the only question I have, because this has come up for um school districts, has come up with other employers. And it's really about, uh how do you maintain that confidentiality around an individual when they're the only one going in for testing? Uh are you gonna have a location where staff can go so that nobody knows their uh vaccination status? Because, because I, I've seen it in schools, they all go to the nurse's office, you all know who's going to get tested. And it's really a violation, so is there anything that we're doing to take into account just knowing where the tests are being taken and who's walking in that room?
We are, we are doing the test at um a facility and the, the policy says where it is. Um there's two times and then um an open slot up until noon. That somebody could be tested and we're, we're covering the up until noon because we have. Um second and third shift police officers and dispatchers that. It would be unfair if we required them to come in it, you know? The, the second shift officers are going to bed around midnight and to require them to come in first thing in the morning. It's really not fair, um when they don't come on shift until late afternoon, so. We've, we've basically got it set up that we've got it Friday mornings, um and then up until noon on Friday. But if somebody had a concern over their privacy, um both Deputy Chief Allsworth. Um will be doing the testing and in his absence, I will be doing the testing. So we're both bound by HIPAA compliance and they could reach out to us and we could. Schedule a time in a, in a different location if somebody was concerned about privacy for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councillor Boone?
Yeah, that, that actually, the fact that they could schedule is uh a good idea. I don't, I don't know if a set place would be all that great, only because, you know, the, the point is very valid that. You know, we're kind of treating people that don't get vaccinated as second-class citizens and that, that's concerning to me. So I'm glad that they, we can set it up to at different times and places.
And, and I think, I mean, the point is well-taken, Michael, and I completely understand. And I think it would be on a case-by-case basis because I can't, nor can Joe. Tie up his entire Friday waiting for somebody to decide to come in when they want, so. I think we would have our set times and if people are comfortable, they can come in at those times. Um and then if somebody didn't feel comfortable or was concerned, they could schedule something separate with either Joe or I.
Any other questions? Okay, well, hearing and seeing none, I want to say thank you, Rick, for attending and for giving the update. Thank you, manager, for uh making sure that was put in place. And just to know, um we did see some email traffic, I know staff probably have questions and they're probably coming to the both of you to get most of those. Questions answered as we go forward.
Yeah, I think I've received two or three emails, uh I think Rick has received a, a number of questions, we're trying to. Uh some of them, we don't know the answers right off the top of our head, we have to research it and confer, but. Uh the best that my knowledge, anybody who's asked a question at this point has been answered.
With, with that, we'll move on to item nine B. Uh council, this is the update on vacant building list and we have Chief Brent listed here. Chief, are you there?
I'm here, can you hear me, Mayor?
I can.
Great, great, thanks. Um I'm listed on the agenda.
Oh, well, we could hear you.
Um Joe, Deputy Chief Allsworth, can you hear me now?
Uh you're cutting in and out a little bit.
I'm sorry about that. Um hopefully you're still copying me. Um Deputy Chief Allsworth is also here, as is um. Uh Janet Shatney, who has been assistive on this project as well. Uh as you know, generally speaking, we do this twice a year, that we update the vacant building list. Uh once in the spring and once in the fall. Uh around Decemberish, uh we're about three weeks behind in how, how, where Howie would actually have us up to speed. But Howie is out right now and while we were doing this, Joe and Janet came up with the idea of. Implementing our building inspection software and making a uh segment of that, which would house the. Vacant building list rather than Howie, who has always done it manually. Um twice a year, he would update it manually, so now it's going. To be as part of our software system, we do with our building inspections, and they've been working with the software company. Um who has been a little behind the uh the ball during the holiday season, but um we think in the end that we're gonna have a much better product. And it'll be searchable, uh and it'll be easier to keep up. The, the upside is that currently, right now, we only show twenty-six buildings on the vacant building list. Um that we are aware of, we had actually subtracted two and then we added two more. Or, um so we stayed right at a stable level and um. Every time that we go out and up, update this, um everything is verified. Uh we look and make sure that nothing has changed, we take pictures of all sides of the buildings. And we keep those things up, that is all done, all the data is put together. And um certainly, correct me if I'm wrong, Janet, Janet's been working with the software company to see what would be necessary in order to. Make that change to the. Program in order so that we can put this there and um. That's kind of my update and I would ask Janet or, and or Joe to, to speak up and, and fill in the blanks that I may have forgotten, because it's a little strange, we're not all together in the same room.
Janet, was there anything you wanted to add?
No, uh uh Chief Brent, uh hit it spot on, um. We're, we're gonna make this a lot easier for the inspectors and that, because that, that's really the goal, right? Is to stop doing so much repetitive work and let's make this easier. Um and uh and then when someone is looking for a list, it'll be much easier producible, so that's our goal.
And Deputy Chief Allsworth, anything you wanted to add as well?
No, I think it'd be advantageous, especially if somebody inquires about a building for us to be able to pull it up immediately. Um we've, we've uh streamlined the uh inspection process for that. Uh vacant building process, so once we search Mobilize, which is our software, we're able to see all the current. Vacant buildings immediately, so I know we've had uh contractors in, in property management companies in the past that have uh. Requested this, so it'll be much easier for when uh either they're doing land records search or they're in Janet's office doing a request. To get that along, so.
So one question, and I don't know which one may be able to answer it, is out of those twenty-six buildings, a number of them are uh businesses and some of them are residential. I believe the last time when Howie came, he said that it was seventeen of the buildings were residential buildings, do you know if it's around that same number still?
So it's far, I'm sorry, Chief.
Oh, go ahead, Joe.
So and uh in talking with Robbie and, and assisting with this, uh their list has become stable. Um the ones that were deleted were uh properties that were sold, uh they were uh multiple tenements. And the ones that were added were similar, so.
Okay, so it should be about the same seventeen for residential.
Mayor, to answer your question about commerce, yeah, a majority of them are residential properties, I'm looking at the list right in front of me right now and a majority of them are residential properties, you're correct.
Okay. Were there other questions that councillors have and if um. You know, ask them if we can't get the answer tonight, we can always make sure to follow up after the meeting, too. Councillor Stockwell?
So when, when a vacant building is sold on a tax sale. And still not inhabited, it's, it's still, it's no longer vacant though, right? I mean, it's not, it doesn't go on the vacancy list even though there's nobody there.
Actually, we have one, two, three, four, five, six properties that are on the list. That I'm looking at that are under tax sale and Carol probably knows better than uh Janet, Joe and myself. What the rules are relative to properties that are on the um tax sale list and what we can and cannot do to those. In that year of, I guess you'd call it redemption is what she calls it.
Thank you. Yeah, there's, there's, they, the ownership doesn't change when they're under tax sale and the, the ability to do anything to the property doesn't change. The only thing that, that does happen, uh a few years ago, the legislature passed a, a law that does allow. A community to make um safety improvements, uh if necessary, public health safety improvements. And then to add the costs associated with that to uh, to the bill for tax sale. Um but other kinds of uh securing the building or, or cleaning up or mowing the lawn or any of that kind of stuff. You can't do any of that, the property is still considered private property, um even though the ownership is in limbo. It's not owned or controlled by the city and there's, there's very little that we can do.
Thank you.
So to, just to clarify though, so could there still be vacant buildings, they're just not on our list because they meet the standard for our minimum housing? I, I think that's more to the question, there, there's still vacant buildings in the city that may not be on this list. Because they're actively under recruitment for housing or maybe somebody's using it as a storage. Location rather than to have people in it.
You, Mr. Mayor? Right. Yeah, you, you are correct, um they, they may have met the criteria upon evaluation and that's how, well, they did not make the uh. Make the list.
Councillor Hemmerich?
Uh thank you, man, thank you everybody for the great update. I was just curious, what type of information do you collect about the units on the list, like uh are the buildings, for instance? Uh does it um say how many units are there? And when you have like a partially occupied building, would that be included, like for instance, a downtown building with vacant upper floors?
So I guess I can answer that, councillor, um if it's partially occupied. It won't be on the building list, um that would be like having a, an apartment that's still for rent or they have, just haven't moved in yet and so forth. So if it's partially vacant, it's not on the vacant building list, it has to be entirely vacant. Um some of the, the um information we get obviously is the owner, if there's a mortgage company, we have that down. Um is it on the registry for um um vacant building list? Uh is the gas on, is the gas off, is the water on, is the water off, is the electricity on, is it a safety issue? For police or fire that may get called there? Has it been registered with the police department to give them ultimate authority to go in if they got a call about it? So there's lots of different information that we, we um, that we seek on those and we try and update that information as, as much as we can. You actually see some vacant buildings that are on, on the list around the city that we've actually posted. Letters on the front door, so that if anybody comes there to go in, they can't miss this letter of us trying to get a hold of them. Um you can't believe how hard. It is to try and get them to some of these companies. Um we'll get a call in the middle of the day, oh, by the way, there's, there's somebody mowing the lawn at such and such a location. We'll run right up there just quickly just to make sure to try and get a hold of them and who hired them to be there? Why are they there, do they have contact information? Um it's, it's very hard, uh to the point where we're in Carol's office, we're researching. Mortgage information and trying to get to the bottom of it, to try and find out who actually owns these buildings. But um I think one of the largest. Things that we as a fire department try and check as we go in there, and that's part of the reason that we do the photo documentation of them is. From a safety standpoint, if we get a fire in one of these buildings in the middle of the night, we want our staff knowing whether these are safe buildings or not to be going into. Are the stairs inside collapsed and all those different questions that you can possibly think of.
So and on the property card, it would say the number of uh bedrooms were in that building, so we could measure how many. Uh living spaces or units are in that building in comparison to the number of uh.
Correct, how many floors are there, is there, is there a basement? Is there a basement and how many floors are there, how many apartments are there? Um and not really a, like a real estate card where it says there's two bedrooms on the second floor and a bathroom on the first floor, it doesn't get quite that descript. But generally speaking, a summarization of what there, what there is in the building, is there an attic, is there a first floor, is there a second floor and is there a basement? Basement being very important for us because we don't want to send somebody into a building and then have them fall through the floor.
So if there's a building with two dwelling units, like a duplex, you would. you would, you would be able to look at this list and be able to count how many independent dwelling units are of record for a particular building?
I believe that we should. I don't have that information right in front of me with those numbers on there. But I don't see any reason why we couldn't get that garnish that information off the list.
Chief, if I may. Just so you know, counselor, that our our mobilize is a searchable database. So when the property comes up, we'll be able to tell exactly what that property is. So it is a duplex or if it has three apartments, we would know that as long as it's in mobilize.
And the other thing that I was just wondering about this is this in relationship to other nuisance ordinances or health orders in that. I was just curious if if this you, this list is a really useful tool in terms of leaning on these property owners to the extent that you can get a multinational lending company to respond where that's the case. But because I've heard, you know, talking with the planning director up in St. Albans city that they've really gotten pretty serious about even on on unkept lawns as health hazards for ticks and rats and things. And I think that's a little heavy handed from my point of view. But but there are certain health hazards and and they are such drags on neighborhood property values and magnets for, for problems. Have we ever issued any health orders on any of these properties?
Joe, do you know the exact answer to that? I would say, yes, we have, counselor, but I'll let Joe answer that.
So, so, yeah, yes, we have. Our goal is, is and from the inception of the vacant building list is to our compliance. As Janet knows, it's very hard to to get them to comply, especially if the person has passed away and it's gone to an estate. A lot of these attorneys have consulted the, the entire family that's existing and a lot of them have walked away. So these, these, these attorneys won't return phone calls. And the same with the big, bigger, like Zillow and stuff like that. We're just a number, a little speck on the map. So when it comes to that, it's very hard to violate a company. You have to write a citation or a health order to an individual and that becomes difficult in itself. So we have had buildings in the past where the city has taken action to mitigate the situation. Perfect example is Bank Street is one of them. Vine Street was another. And so what we did is we took action to rectify the situation, secure the property. We ended up billing the company directly. And we've had very good success with that with our out of pocket. So one, we appeased the neighborhood by securing and cleaning up the structure. And we engaged the company. That usually kind of brings it to a head to say, oh, there's a problem here. Thank you, City of Berry for securing our building. And they generally write a, a check. We refer to Sylvie if they don't, after the bill is done in 30 days. And then she follows up and usually within three to six weeks, when they get hit with this finance charge on a $2,000, $2,500 bill, they usually come around and pay that. So that's, that's part of the process that we're doing. So the compliance end has been pretty good.
Counselor Rea?
So just out of curiosity, the duplex next to my house has been abandoned for I don't know how many years. But I've talked about it many times on Bassett Street. And so when, when people look at it, I think in the springtime and then you all came, I believe my husband said in December-ish, people looked at the house, took pictures and left. And what they, but nobody walked around the building and nobody went inside. And the, you know, and what's interesting is it's been abandoned for a couple of years. And I've been talking about this for, for a while, that nobody's actually been out in the back property. And I'm just wondering if y'all look at the full property or just the house. And we can actually see from our window the animals that have destroyed like the chimney and, and part of the roof. So I'm just wondering about all that.
So counselor, as far as the Bassett Street property, I have gone out back and walked out to that area that has a little bit of scrap in the burn barrel there. I know that Inspector Strachan has also, he has photo documented that. The problem with that property is, is that that owner was ill and then passed away. There's only so much rights that we have to entering onto somebody's property. If we were to start trespassing onto people's property, we would be held liable. So that we have to be very careful on why we're there and where we're at. That, that property has gone to an estate sale, I'm sorry, an estate and it's been appointed to an attorney out of Burlington, which I personally have called four times to try to to get through to somebody. And I don't get any phone calls back. So we have photo documented that that is secure from what I have seen. There are certain things that we cannot remove once it goes to tax sale. I've consulted with a clerk and the clerk has guided us on exactly what we can and can't do. And so that's why we have, nothing has happened. We're in that limbo stage with the tax sale that nobody of record has taken possession of that property.
Okay, right now, I mean, with the wind, right now, with the winter, I mean, like the scrap is covered by the snow. I'm concerned about the roof right now, so.
But and I can appreciate that, counselor. But again, until a member of the family redeems that or the new owner takes place, there's very little that we can do under the guidance from the clerk. We have made sure that it's secured from theft and fire. The electrical is off and the water is off from that facility. Oh, I'm sorry, that building. So that's about all the extent that we can take action at this point from the guidance I've received.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Booton?
Yeah, so Counselor Hemmerich made a comment about St. Albans. And I think that we kind of, I don't know if that's a big problem, quite frankly, with a house that's owned by a bank and they're fining people for lawn issues. I mean, that would be a hazardous, you know, ticks are a hazard. We got Bernadette Rose on the line here and I'm sure she would gladly tell us that it actually is a, you know, a health issue and certainly not a bad idea to look into, although I don't know if we have the capacity to, to do that as a municipality to look into it. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't sell it short.
Counselor Stockwell?
I have a question for the three of you. And that is, two properties where I live on Ellison Street were sold in a tax sale. And the person who sold them cut down some trees and really did nothing else. So and then one sold again, but they're still vacant. So would it be better if we had a policy? I guess really this is for Janet. If we had a policy that if the house went into tax sale, you had within two years to get the house inhabitable. Does that make sense? Because it seems to me that our grand list would benefit if instead of just selling the house for $10,000 and goes to a tax sale, it still sits there. We sell it again, it still sits there. If we had a policy that if you're going to buy this house in a tax sale, you have to do something with it. Even if you tear it down, it's still better than letting it rot into the ground.
That's a great question and suggestion. I don't have the answer to that. That is, that would be, in my mind, at first thought, a policy that would, that certainly legal would need to weigh in on. I mean, if, if we really want to take that on. Captain Mark has alluded to what Selva does about keeping lawns mode. If you recall, when we updated the vacant housing ordinance two years ago, I'm having trouble with internet, so I'm going to turn my camera off. That, there was, some folks in the audience were concerned that the Berry City was, if we were going to make vacant buildings be kept, have their lawns kept to six inches or less for grass in the, in the three seasons that grass grows, next thing that we would be doing would be having an ordinance where we would be requiring everybody to keep their lawns mode. And that is a, that is a very large hurdle. Certainly something that you folks can talk about, we can all talk about, right? But as your suggestion about having like a two year window, I suppose anything can be tried. It would have to be vetted clearly, making sure that, that's, that the inspectors and staff have the time to visit various parts of the city and make sure that everything is, is being kept up. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Hemmerich?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and huge appreciation for all you do to chase down attorneys and mortgage companies. And I know it's, it's such a pain. And I know the people of the city in Ward One really appreciate it because, you know, these, these properties are such, such a drag on the neighborhood and impose a lot, you know, they're a drag on the grand list and, and they're a magnet for nuisances. I just use that lawn thing as an example. And I did look up St. Albans ordinance, it's 10 inches there. But to the policy point is that I'm just wondering if, you know, are we leaning? Is, can the city, how can the city lean in to get these people to move? Whatever, I mean, maybe it's, I've seen where other cities have put up big signs and say, call this person if you're frustrated with this property, whoever is the owner or controller of that property. And maybe if that attorney, that legal firm in Burlington gets 20 calls a day from people in Berry who are frustrated with this situation, something would happen. Or in, or in the penalty section to the St. Albans ordinance, I'm seeing that they, they say the charges levied in this chapter shall be a lien on the property and it will compound at an interest of 12%. It shall, and, and it will be, and then it will be enforced in the manner as provided for the collection of taxes on a property. And I'm wondering if that might be a policy difference that's a bit different than writing a ticket to an individual because it might motivate somebody who's holding that property and seeing that bill rack up and say, okay, we need to do something on this. We can't, we can't sit on this, this nuisance that's a drag on Berry City and a drag on our neighborhoods and a magnet for nuisances. And I also see that they're, they're doing inspections upon transfer or sale or exchanges of property, which was a surprise to me. So it sounds like St. Albans City, at least in this ordinance, is being very serious. And I know Rutland City has also there, had this policy that Counselor Stockwell and the mayor and I looked into for the housing proposal that we're going to be talking about on the 12th, where they're taking properties back in tax sale and then doing redevelopment agreements to get them back into productive use and get them back on the grand list. And so I think there's, there's some potential interface there, but it's, it is, it probably comes down like anything, comes down to, is there bandwidth? You know, who's gonna, who's gonna do that hard work of researching these ordinances? What can be legally done? How do you respect and honor people's rights? Which is why I'm really proud in this council and where we landed in this budget and making important investments, at least proposed investments for the voters to consider in positions like an assistant planner that can do projects just like this, important projects to, to grow the grand list.
So are there any other questions related to the update on vacant buildings? Okay, well, hearing and seeing none, thank you to Doug, Janet and Joe for all attending for this item tonight.
And, and happy new year to everybody.
Happy new year to you too. So counsel, moving on, we are at item nine C. This is the discussion on proposed charter changes for the 2022 town meeting. And I will turn that over to the clerk.
Well, I just, I put this on the agenda and will continue to put it on the agenda until the sometime as the language is locked. Because I, it doesn't feel like the council has had much conversation around the language itself. So I wanted to continue to give counsel an opportunity to, to talk about the, the language as it's presented here. What I put in the packets at our last meeting, counsel asked that, that it be shared with Oliver for his legal opinion. So what I did was I crafted a document with some explanatory language for Oliver about what, what the, the intent was behind the, the various and sundry sections. So I wanted to give counsel an opportunity to, to respond to my editorials, as it were, to see if I had captured what the intention was and also to see if counsel had any additional conversation that they wanted to have around these. The, these, these are important and I feel like they haven't been getting the, the conversation that they need, that they deserve.
And I appreciate the city clerk has gone above and beyond as usual and pulled this together. And there was discussion on some of this, I believe, with the Charter Work Group. So if you want, we can just go down one by one, just to make sure that we have a conversation on each one. Make sure that we are all in agreement on these items or at least have a consensus or majority rule if necessary. And then keep moving forward. So the first one on the list here is section 104. This is the general corporate powers. And this is what Counselor Hemmerich, I believe, had noted. He added in the conveyance of an easement and then basically a line that says, any acquired or conveyed property through this, the means listed in this section shall require approval by city council. And I think the intent there is, we have had a manager that has come before us to do this work. But in the future, we don't know if that's going to be the case. So this would make sure that it was set in stone and it would be within our, our charter. Counselor Wazak?
Yeah, I agree with this section and adding in the easement. I just, I think you laid that out well, Mr. Mayor, that manager McKendy, I feel, has always gone above and be, above and beyond to be as transparent and as, have as much conversation with counsel as possible. But I also feel that, you know, the council being the ultimate governing authority of the city, anything involving city property should get the once over from the council. So I support adding the easement.
Is there any other comments or questions? Are we okay with that one move forward?
I'm fine with that one.
Okay. Next one is section 307, which is powers of the city. And this one here is removing the position of grand juror. I'll note the last person that has that position was me and it was kind of a joke because the physician really didn't do anything. So this would just be cleanup language to remove that position. Just making sure any questions or comments there. Okay, hearing, seeing none. Section 407, this is more cleanup language. This is for appointments and this is for an inspector of plumbing. And it's currently something that is not utilized. And I believe we had a, a section, a whole section of our ordinance that was at one point about plumbing. And I don't think that's in effect anymore, if I remember.
We recently removed it.
Just because it's not needed or it's covered by someone else doing, doing that function?
So I believe it's something that's covered at the state level. But with DPW Director Bill Ahern here, maybe he can speak a little bit more about plumbing and that's how that's addressed. Maybe he's here, maybe.
He was.
I am, and, and thank you, Mayor and councilors, for an opportunity to speak. The, the state does address plumbing in public buildings and sets standards for any type of commercial enterprise. It typically does not address single family residences. And one of the things that Barry has, has had historically wasn't an ordinance that went all the way back to the concept of having vented plumbing. And, and for example, there were things in our plumbing ordinance in the past that called for each home to have a, a building vent and trap. And so were there no other code? And so were there no other um, code compliant plumbing in the house, um, you would avoid sewer gas in the house by virtue of the city's ordinance. So there, there has historically been um, a strength to the ordinance. And um, with the, the relationship of, of the plumbing code and master plumbers available to make certain that things are done correctly, it's not as necessary. Um, there were elements of the code, the municipal code, that were valuable, such as the type of piping that had to exit the wall of the building. Again, probably no longer essential um, for public health. Um, but they were constructive in terms of helping people get to where we needed to be. So um, one of my observations about our charter changes is um, reflecting on their value versus our current um, staffing levels. And so removing a, a plumbing inspector because we don't have one um, aligns the ordinances with our current operations. But I, I, I'm not certain that aligning with current operations is always the best practice. I, I don't have an objection here. I just think that it's, it's important to look at the value of the position versus our ability to staff it in any instant and, and um, probably not relevant to this, but worthy of consideration by the council as we look at charter changes.
Bernadette, you had your hand up.
Yes, thank you. Um, when we, we added a bathroom uh, to our house, um, I don't know, five or six years ago, and I was told that we, uh, the permit we had to get for the plumbing was a state permit, uh, because our um, the resources of the city's sewer water uh, had a certain uh, amount that they were allowed by the state uh, for, for what we have. And so we had to replace all of the existing plumbing in our house at the time in order to put in a bathroom because it didn't meet the state code. It went from a half inch to three quarters inch intake and the outtake, I think, in, increased by uh, by an inch. So I'm confused about, about why I had to do all of that if we don't have any regulations for it. I'm just, it, it just feels really confusing to hear this now because it was a lot of money.
Sure. Bill, do you want to respond?
So, so I'm, I am actually taken aback. Um, uh, the state's jurisdiction is for um, subdivisions and public buildings, and so a pre-existing lot. I, I'm frankly astounded, but I will follow up. Um, because a single-family residence um, that pre-exists, to the best of my knowledge, didn't require a state permit, but I, I need to research that. And Bernadette, thank you for bringing that to my attention because I, both of those things that you cited, um, so a minimum sewer size of four inch um, didn't exist and a three inch would have to be upgraded to a four inch. And the minimum sized water supply is three-quarter inch, just as you've stated. Um, and again, the city may have installed half-inch um, water supplies uh, in the past. Again, we're history, we're sitting with a long history, and so um, both of those things are possible. I, I need to look into that, Bernadette, and thank you for bringing that to my attention. I will um, follow up and get an answer and, and reply to you and the council as to why the state asserted jurisdiction over a single-family residence.
I, I had to get that. I'm pretty sure um, because I, I was helping Hannah with that stuff, that I filled all that out, and it was a state, and we had to have an inspector. And off the top of my head, I can't remember if it was somebody from the city who came, but I think I had to arrange for a s- a state person. And um, it was uh, the incoming lines and the outgoing lines that go from the house to the city, those didn't change. So it was just, once you hit our house, then everything in the house had to change. And uh, they didn't make us tear up the upstairs of the house at the time, but we ended up with a leak. So we, and we now have all-new plumbing in our house at great expense to us. So if people don't have to do that, and it's um, it had something to do with the number of how many sinks and toilets and showers. So it was, whatever you call each one of those has got a, a name for it, um, appliances. I think is what they call it.
Bill, I want to say thank you. And Bernadette, yeah, this sounds like something that's a state issue, so um, I'm thankful that Bill's willing to, to follow up on that with you.
I, I just wanted to, to say that um, looking, thinking back to, it was well over ten years ago when the city stopped issuing um, plumbing permits. Um, it, it was a, it was a considered decision. It, it wasn't driven by staff. It wasn't that, that there wasn't any staff because, so the city decided to stop dealing with, with plumbing. It was a decision that was made um, by the, by the city. Uh, and to, to me, this is just archaic language that's left in here that says, we shall appoint positions that no longer exist. And so I, I'm, it, it's not so much um, uh, uh, value versus current um, staffing levels. It's uh, trying to reflect, um, trying to bring the charter into compliance with what, a decision that was made many years ago, so.
And sometimes, uh, and I think even with the, the food vending policy, we have times where the state and the city overlap. So this might have been another area where there was some overlap. I can't remember from ten years ago either, but um, usually that drives some of the decision of, it's, to think of it about like Act two fifty on a much larger scale. There, there's different policies at a local level and at a state level, and and a lot of times people have to apply for both permits when it's really repetitive. So I'm thinking that might have been part of the case, too.
Um, we also don't appoint a superintendent of streets. I mean, so there's other parts of that that seem like things we've done.
I've noticed that. I'm going to go back through the charter, at least the uh, some of the sections. I think there are other positions in the charter that are.
We brought that one forward before and it was shot down, so. To have it removed and it was shot down. Counsel.
Counsel. Uh, and I think it was both the superintendent of streets and superintendent of waterworks, I think, were in the same conversation.
Yeah, there was, um, this is Teddy, sorry. There was, I remember that conversation. There was, it wasn't as if council, based on my recollection, we didn't decide to keep it. We were presented with a reason why we should not get rid of it. I just don't know what that.
Bill, do you remember that one at all?
I, I do, and, and I was a proponent of retaining the superintendencies, um, essentially because they're, they're such dramatically different functions. And although we, we haven't named someone to that role, um, we could, and I'm currently um, we're organized so that my streets, uh, for person A, the highest level of, of uh, for person in, in all of DPW fulfills the functions of a superintendent.
And would that be the same for superintendent of waterworks?
Um, again, we actually have named Steve McKelley as the superintendent of uh, water and sewer. So both of those um, superintendencies are fulfilled.
Okay, thank you. Were there other questions on that before we move? Okay, so.
Uh, I'm sorry, I don't feel like, uh, it's like we've got clear direction on that. Is it, are we keeping it in as a possible charter change, or do we want to eliminate it from the list?
From, from what I'm understanding, um, we kept the superintendent of streets and waterworks as those are positions. One would be named, one is currently named, and what is currently struck out for the inspector of plumbing would be removed, um, as listed. And I'm seeing nods around the table. Okay, uh, moving on to the next one. This is section four oh nine. There are two different versions here, uh, and they both relate to a capital improvement plan. Um, of course, I'm not going to read them because they're a little bit longer. And I guess if, if people are in favor of this, is there a version that they are in favor of over the other? Bill, I see your hand is up.
So um, I, again, uh, for, for the consideration of the council, um, the, the difference between um, enabling and compulsory legislation is important here. Um, I'm, I'm truly an advocate for um, capital planning and for having a process that's clearly defined, um, and people are accountable to. Um, but what I'm, what I'm facing as, as your um, employee and as a, a public servant to the city is that, um, if I'm compelled to perform this, which I believe the language does create, it asserts it has to be done, it's not optional, then um, I, I would caution that we're not staffed well to perform this. And so um, if this were enabling, I, I would be a strong supporter, but because it's compulsory um, and we're understaffed as a administration, I think there's, there's reason to, to consider it. Um, it shouldn't, it shouldn't um, way to prevent the council from taking a prudent action, but I'm concerned that this moves this from something that can be dim, done to something that must be done. And, and we're just not staffed deep enough to do this well.
Counselor Booton?
Yeah, I'm not going to go too much into it. Everybody knows where I stand on this. I would agree with what Bill just said.
Counselor Hemmerich?
Uh, th- thank you, thank you, Bill, and, and uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, it's, I think everybody knows, too, this is, I think it's really important that this is a a, a requirement, just like the preparation of a normal budget is a requirement for the operational years. Um, I just think this is an essential function. I think I, I ran on this two years ago as a, as a core platform idea. I've been consistent about it. Um, one with eighty percent of the vote against a two-term incumbent. Um, and uh, and, and I think having um, this, this language that ensures that the voters tells the voters, we're going to follow through. This city is going to follow through. If we, if you pass a local option tax, this is, this is an item that's going to be in the charter. Um, I think gives them reasonable assurance that there's going to be a good process, uh, transparency, and a consistent commitment to um, to main, to maintain this in the budget. And, and when you look at, when we're talking about two hundred thousand dollars in annual unbudgeted expenses, emergency repairs, um, plus there's, you know, the surprise bills from V-Trans and um, and uh, and projects that go over cost like the swimming pool. And then we have the streets budget running at about a third of where it should be running according to municipal plan to keep up. Each year, we're digging a bigger hole. We have an equipment, annual equipment plan with shortfalls between seven hundred and sixteen thousand dollars each year to a million dollars each year. And that list doesn't even include the buildings and facilities. This city has a serious um, uh, uh, a serious financial obstacle to confront, and we don't get out of that until we start to get serious about capital planning and doing it every single year, just like we would do an operational budget, to build a program and budget and to make sure that there's priority and that there's a clear narrative, that there's actual cost estimates, and that there's estimated annual costs of operating and maintaining the facilities to be constructed and acquired. Um, so if this isn't in this charter uh, uh, package, um, uh, my, my vote, um, I, you, my vote will be no.
So counsel, I'm just going to get back. I, I think we already stated at the, the last conversation that we were looking to include this. Um, I'm going to see if that overall opinion has changed. I don't see that it has. So getting back to the version, um, I'm just, I'll speak to it. Uh, between version one and two, I think the main difference here is that in one of them, the second one uh, is notifying the boards, committees, and commissions at a four-month period, which then the entire plan is submitted to the council at a uh, three-month period before the annual town meeting. Uh, so Counsel Hemmerich, is that pretty much the difference between the two? Is he shut? Yes?
Yeah, and I, and I, I'd still think this would need to um, get an attorney review. I, this was, uh, I wrote this out in about an hour, the Sunday before a budget meeting. Um, and so uh, so, so I think having that legal review is important. And I think, you know, and to, to Bill's point, that we did, we, there are also real capacity issues. And that's again, why I'm, I'm really, I'm really pleased where the budget landed and that there is funding for an assistant public works um, director in this budget to do this critical work um, for the long-term financial sustainability of the city, because I would just hate to get to the point where we're like, we're, we're like other municipalities that have to think about, you know, which firefighters are we going to cut, which police officers are we going to cut? Because um, because each year, the city is digging a bigger and bigger hole. And, and so this, this helps us get ahead. This is the stitch in time that's, that saves nine. Um, and, and our budget follows through on this commitment um, to have an assistant public works director and assistant planner. Um, so uh, so I think there are just a couple differences. There's a little bit more detail in my version than the version up, above. Mine ties back to um, uh, chapter one seventeen, the Municipal and Regional Planning Development Act process, which is the process that needs to be in place to maintain our designated downtown, um, which confers a lot of important regulatory and non-regulatory benefits from the state. So um, uh, so, you know, I think if, you know, Attorney Twombly had a few tweaks or feedback, um, there may be improvements to version B, but um, but that's, that's, that's what I'd, I'd go with.
So counsel, any other questions on version B? And I just have one at the end. I just want to make sure counsel has comments.
No, I, I don't see how we can't not do it. It just seems like, without knowing what's going to be needed over the next five years and planning for it, that just seems like such a liability to not have that plan in place and not have a sense of how we're going to accomplish the basic, the, the very basic things of maintaining the city that we have.
Bill, is your hand up again? I just wanted to confirm.
My apologies, I was delinquent in taking it down.
Okay, no, that's fine. So seeing no other hands up for comments, the only uh, piece of version B is the section C for notifying the uh, other bodies. And I'm wondering, does that need to be in here? Is that something that as part of the planning process? Um, a lot of the committees don't have funds, for example. A lot of the committees don't make recommendations on costs, and if they do, they'd actually be making those recommendations to council rather than the department heads. There are some committees that are advisory, uh, so I, I'm not sure about that one section. If, if all, any board committee commit, uh, it says committee twice there, but I think that means commission, um, for that sec- uh, second version of it, shall be notified of the capital plan uh, preparation at least four months prior to the annual meeting. So I, I'm just wondering if um, that's just necessary within the charter language. I mean, we could always do it as a courtesy at any time, and. Counselor Wazizak?
Yeah, I'd be fine, I'd be fine with taking out that section about the boards, commissions, et cetera. I think that we have, over the past four years, become a very open council to receiving ideas and uh, my brain is still foggy here. I'm recovering from COVID. Um, but yeah, and I, I, I think we can take that out, and I think that this being something new that we're putting in the, that would be asking the voters and the legislature to put in the charter, start with the capital plan, and then if as it gets implemented, we need to make changes to it, or it's not working, we can go from there.
So Counselor Hemmerich, would you be fine with that? I'm just.
Yeah, I, I think that, that's okay. It's not essential. I think it'd be a good practice, and, and whether it's the dog park committee or the um, or the transportation advisory committee or paths, routes, and trails, there's often all, there's often capital requests that would meet a threshold above, let's say, twenty-five thousand dollar, ten thousand dollars a year, maybe not the dog park committee, but um, but certainly other committees like the planning commissioner, the ADA committee, thinking about uh, bump outs and curb ramps or elevated crosswalks, and those would, those would be the types of items that you would want input from those committees on. Um, in, in terms of, are, are we meeting the needs of the, uh, the people of the city and thinking uh, about long-term improvements?
Yeah, and I think with the joint committee that was held uh, in mid-December, we're, we're kind of trying to meet that threshold already, uh, with the PRT. uh, with the PRT and the ADA and the TAC all meeting together. So I think the intent's already there. Okay, so if council doesn't object, version B, removing section C, and then of course, D would be re-lettered to C. Okay? Moving on, we have section five oh one, creation and organization. So again, this is removing those plumbing sections since we wouldn't have that position. Just making sure people are kind of that still. So moving down to section six oh five, uh, this is applying sales. It's really addition of the sales to what we already have in place for local options tax. I think council is fine with that. Um, the question is really about the second line, um, and the subsection C below that on how we want to have it listed. Uh, in one area, it is for capital equipment and capital improvement needs. The other one, uh, basically states that it's going to be put into reserve fund and for those same reasons, it with an exception that revenues resulting from cannabis sales may be applied to healthy and active youth programming. Uh, and Councilor Hammerick, I think that was your recommendation, uh, for addition in there. Uh, we might want to, yeah, run that one by the attorney if we keep that, just to make sure that what healthy and active youth programming means and to make sure that it's the right terminology.
And as I, I noted in my editorial comment, um, my understanding and, and I've been in contact with the Department of Taxes, um, is that the, the intention anyway is that there will be no separate um, uh, record-keeping with regards to cannabis sales, um, that they will be taxed as standard sales tax. Um, and so there, the likelihood of us being able to separate out the, the revenue from the sales of cannabis as opposed to the sales, uh, other sales is probably slim to none. So just something to have in mind.
I have a preference for C. I think we really do need to focus on capital improvement.
So, um, because of Hammerick's
You mean the first C or the second C?
The first, there's two Cs.
And, and Councilor Hammerick, I think, uh, what Counselor Wazizak had noted before, if we can enact this, we could always revisit to see if there is a way to break out those funds at a future time. But if it doesn't seem like it's feasible now, um, at least we would have that first conversation done out of the way. Councilor Booton?
We want to entertain any conversation about the email that was sent by former counselor, Rich Maury regarding having it go to a fund.
Feel free to bring up whatever
Well, I, I mean, I don't support this, this charter language anyway, so I just wanted to point it out that somebody did bring it up as an option. And I think he's on the, the call if he wanted to speak to it. Uh, I did, you know, there was some conversation about the capital equipment and capital improvement versus streets and sidewalk reconstruction. I understand that, you know, we want, I understand that it kind of opens it up a little bit. But may want to keep it the way that it was for the streets and sidewalks. But I don't support it at all, so it doesn't really make a difference where I stand on it.
Steve? Yeah, I, I, I strongly prefer, as manager, I'm not a counselor, but I strongly prefer the first section C. And I feel even more strongly that we need to keep the wording in for street, uh, street and sidewalk reconstruction. I would, I would have it read, this section shall be designated for street and sidewalk reconstruction, comma, capital equipment, comma, and/or capital improvements. You know, long after this council is gone, uh, somebody's going to look at the language and say, well, does capital improvements, uh, does that include streets and reconstruction or not? Or whatever. I think having it be explicit and not losing, uh, the language of the original local options tax that, that, um, uh, was passed is critically important. And I think that wording makes it crystal clear to the voters just exactly what the money is going to be used for. So I would, I would really hate to see the language, street and sidewalk reconstruction dropped from that text.
Councilor Shondell?
I'm going to agree with Steve on that and that the language is much more precise. And I think there's something to be said with that, especially when you're dealing with a topic that sounds like it is not very popular.
I'd have to agree with precise language is the better way to go.
It takes a vagueness out of it.
Councilor Hammerick?
Yeah, I'd, I'd support that too, to have the designated solely for street sidewalk reconstruction, comma, capital improvement, capital equipment, comma, capital improvement. But, but I do think it, it would be important to link that to a, um, a separated fund and that it's going to be appropriated, uh, under the, the section four oh nine. Um, so that it links back to that process, that annual process that, uh, if we collect these funds, there's going to be, uh, a, a clear, uh, a clear place you can look to as a citizen and say, oh, this is, this is where, this is how these monies are going to be spent.
But I think we, I, I think there's, it's on, I don't think Dawn is on, is she?
No.
No. And Carol, you may correct me if I misspeak, but I don't know that it's important or critical to have a separate fund. The, the, the revenues are tracked by separate accounts. So, um, the ability to track it, to designate it and to use the monies, uh, for the intended purpose exists as we operate right now because it's tracked with separate accounts. So, uh, I, and I would, I would like to have Dawn, uh, speak to this and the next time it comes up, I'll make sure she's in attendance. I, I could be wrong, but I think she might, um, not be supportive of the fund language. I'll defer to her, but I just wanted to bring that up for awareness, at least at this point.
So just for trying to split that and, and try to come to consensus there, referencing section four oh nine, I think would allow for this to at least reference that the capital plan that is to be created is what this is, uh, a part of. And that capital plan would have those items that, instead of it being a separate fund, it, it's what those, uh, different lines would be addressing. So do you have any concern with it referring back to the capital improvement plan, which is the other charter language?
Well, I, I don't think I have a ref, I don't think I have a problem referring it back to four oh nine, but I, but I still don't, I still strongly recommend we don't. We don't, we, I strongly recommend that we use the language that I suggested a few minutes ago.
So I'm going to try to recap all of that just in, uh, for conversation. The, the section C that's there would basically read, as revenues received through a tax imposed under this section shall be designated for streets, sidewalk reconstruction, comma, for capital equipment.
And we get rid of that for?
Okay, capital equipment and/or capital improvement needs under section four oh nine. And, and the reason why?
Fine with that.
Okay, and then that way there, it does refer back to the purpose. And I think, Councilor Hammerick, that's what you were trying to get to. So even if it's not a separate fund, uh, it's stated there directly for the other part of the, uh, or, uh, charter that we would be using those funds for. Councilor Hammerick?
Yeah, the one, the one word you missed there for the record was solely, that it should be designated solely, uh, for those purposes. And, and to, um, uh, Rich Maury's, uh, email, just to, to speak to that a little bit. I, and I think that there's an interesting idea about, uh, other opportunities, um, that this, um, that these revenues, uh, could go to support. And he mentioned, um, a, a new loan, loan program. Uh, I'm not sure to what extent, um, Rich, you, you want to, you'd want to speak to that tonight. Um, one thing that I, I'd want to learn more about, if it came to a, a revolving loan program is that we have a revolving loan, uh, program currently administered, or, or the BADC does administer for small businesses. There's, um, the community capital Vermont, VIDA has loan programs for entrepreneurs and small businesses. So there's, there's a, um, a pretty wide landscape of available, um, loan programs. And I just want to learn more about, um, what, what gap in the market that that would fit and, and the governance around, um, certain business supports like that. Um, but even so, if the water doesn't run, business doesn't run. And, uh, and, and, and we know we have tremendous capital needs in the city, um, many of which can go to benefit uh, downtown streets, streetscape improving, improvement, sorry, and, um, and place-making to drive destination spending and support businesses. So to me, this is a great starting point to see what the voters think. And, uh, um, and, and I think it creates a, a good structure for transparent spending on, on capital improvements.
So Rich, if you're there, do you want to speak to this at all?
Sure, I can. Uh, as, uh, I, I don't know, everybody in council had a chance to read my email. The idea I proposed was instead of adding a one percent options tax on sales, we would add a half cent or a half percent, pretty much comes out to the same exact thing, uh, percent options tax. Um, and that, that money would go to three things. The first one being a loan fund that would be administered, uh, through the city, so it'd be for city-only benefit. Um, so people, let's use Brave as an example, that opened up on Main Street. Somebody that was looking to open or expand an existing business that maybe only has one, two employees. Um, you know, they need five thousand dollars to expand their inventory, remodel, whatever it is that they're going to do. Um, you know, they would be eligible for those funds. Um, somebody like Bellevance that opened a driving school that may need twenty-five thousand dollars or more, that's going to be available for them to apply for. And the idea is that it keeps businesses that are already in Berry, in Berry, they don't need to look to expand or grow in, in any other community. It attracts new businesses that maybe need the seed money to start and open a business. Um, and then it encourages businesses to grow and to expand, which, as we know, is going to help out for tax purposes. It's going to help out for job placement purposes, and it's going to be the benefit of everybody in the city. So this would be a, a multi-year repayment plan. It would be a revolving loan fa- fund like Counselor Hammerick said. You know, year one, you wouldn't have to pay any money back. That's kind of the first years when every business struggles to maintain or, or gain a foothold. Uh, year two would be, let's say, twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent repayment. And then to year four or year five would be your full repayment due. It would have a board that, or a committee that would oversee it, made up ideally of the executive director of the partnership, the executive director of the BADC, um, a business community member, somebody from the community at large. Um, and, and perhaps even, you know, the city manager or, uh, the planning director. Um, they would be the ones, there'd be an application to go along with it, showing what the financial impacts ramifications would be, where the money would be going, the type of positions, um, that would be gained from it in terms of FTE, full-time employees. Um, and, and once that committee had made a selection, it would be presented to council. Council would have the final say on whether they approved it or, or didn't approve it. And, and you know, that way everyone's kept in the loop and the community at large knows what's going on. And one of the benefits I really see about this is that it shows the community at large, the citizens at large, that council's actually trying to make, uh, an improvement in our city in terms of business. And I think, you know, my experience is that everybody complains that we need more businesses, we need more businesses, we need more storefronts on Main Street, whatever that may be. And, you know, what is council doing to, to address that problem? Well, hey, you know what? We have this loan fund. We're encouraging businesses to come to Berry, to grow in Berry and to stay in Berry. And I think it would be a unique offering, uh, in the state that no other community has. And so it would be a real attraction point for a lot of businesses to want to come here and have that money available to them. So that's one aspect of it. The other aspect would be using, uh, some of the revenue from that. It was projected at seven hundred and fifty thousand for a one percent options tax. So let's say half of, the half a percent that I said, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year. You could take another chunk of that money and use it to actually hire a full-time grant writing position for the city. The benefit of that would be that it would take the grant writing, the application and maintenance off from our department heads' plates and allow one person to be the spear point, the focal point for all the grant applications, all the grant writing, all the grant administration across the board for the city at large. So it's going to free up time, it's going to allow that one person to focus on that, and it's going to really benefit the city. Hopefully it would allow for more grants to be applied for. And, you know, we could use a little bit of that money for the dollar-for-dollar match or that is often required. Um, so that would be an, another plus. And then the third option to consider would be, um, and, and, uh, Counselor Hammerick raised a good point through email on this in, in terms of the downtown designation with the partnership, would be looking at taking the partnership contribution out of the city budget and taking it from that half-cent, uh, options tax, um, which would actually then lower our city budget yearly. So those were the, the three ways that I kind of looked at it and a different, a different way of going about getting that options tax in. Um, I think from a public standpoint and a business standpoint, that might be an easier sell than a straight one percent sales tax. Um, and then that way you could also keep the one percent options tax for meals, rooms and alcohol and keep that geared towards streets and, streets and sidewalks, which I think everybody in the city would agree is something that needs to, to maintain a focal point as well. So that was kind of what I outlined in my email and, and have spoken about. So, um, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Maury. Any questions? Steve?
Um, uh, Rich, I, I highly respect your opinion. Uh, but I'm not sure I understand the funding mechanism that you're proposing. You said something about a half a cent tax. Did I get that right?
Yeah, so instead of the one percent, it would be a half a percent or, or half a cent, either way that you look at it. I mean, one percent of a dollar is still a penny, so a half a percent would be a half a cent.
But are you talking about that half cent being, uh, a sales tax or on the tax rate?
It would be a, a half-cent options tax instead of the full one percent options tax.
And, and is your proposal to, to use that half cent, half percent to fund, uh, just the three items that you were, you reviewed?
Correct. Those are the three items that I had targeted in my proposal, um, using the three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, that was proposed, it would generate based on the one percent. So one percent was, was proposed at, uh, was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So half of that, three seventy-five, would fund these three items.
Yeah, I, I guess, um, I guess it's all in the eye of the beholder. Uh, one of the, one of the, I think, key tenets of the original sales tax, and I believe the, the, the one percent sales tax that's being proposed now, is that these monies would be, that were raised, would be used strictly for capital needs. And that's the broad capital, streets, sidewalks, uh, capital equipment and capital improvements. And, and as Counselor, uh, Hammerick will attest and has said many times, and we're all aware of it, um, even the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, um, won't get us to where we need to be fast enough. But it's a horrendous, uh, step forward if, if voters approve it, uh, over where we are now. Um, the, the, and I think part of the dilemma is we can't do everything we want at, uh, at the same time. Um, and again, I believe that by being able to put it on the ballot as, uh, this sales tax is going to go strictly to streets, reconstruct sidewalks, uh, capital and capital improvements. It's very clear to the voters what, uh, is being used for and it's not being used to subsidize the general fund operating budget. And, and a couple of items that you spoke to actually, um, um, blur that, uh, segregation of operating funds from, uh, capital funds. Uh, putting, you know, um, uh, putting the funding of BADC and/or the partnership in this begins to blur that line of, uh, keeping operating funds and capital funds separate. I, I, I appreciate, you know, as manager, the recommendations you made. But, um, I personally think it's a mistake if we are going to try to raise money for badly needed capital, uh, projects. Um, I think we need to just keep the, keep it clear, straightforward, succinct. And the, and, and tell the voters that this is what it's going to be used for, these capital items. Uh, we will, as part of the, uh, run-up to town meeting, we're going to have to be very specific about what that, uh, what those capital needs are. But, uh, a- again, I'm not a counselor, I'm just a lame duck manager. But, um, I, uh, I think it's critically important to keep them segregated. But um, I uh, I think it's critically important to keep them segregated.
I wouldn't say you're a lame duck at all, you're getting a lot of work done still.
I was lame for about two months.
So council.
Sorry, I'm trying to figure out how to raise my hand, I couldn't find it on my phone. Uh, Steve, I I I don't disagree with you, and you know that I respect your opinion as well. I just think in uh my conversations with business owners and uh people paying taxes in the city. That they feel they already pay a tax to have their streets and sidewalks uh done. And and adding another tax to say, okay, well, we need this extra money to get it done on top of the money that you're already paying to get it done. I've heard, and I'm not saying this is my personal opinion, I've heard that it's not being well-received because they feel like they're being. Taxed more on services they should already be receiving to now say, okay, well, this little extra bit will actually get you the services that you should be receiving. And so I think that's the concern and the uphill battle that everybody's gonna face in trying to get this across the finish line.
Yeah, I'd just respond to that to say that originally this was proposed to be all of those items. And that would have helped uh from that get-go. If this was a path passed as originally was planned, we might not see the uh backlog that we currently have. So uh, it will be our job as council if, and I'll follow up with council on this shortly to see if they wanna continue that course. Uh, but it would be to sell uh what the funds actually go for. The the amount that we we collect right now, which is only on rooms, meals and alcohol, is a drop in the bucket. Um, the sales tax was always the the bigger piece that was needed. I think um, if it, my memory is correct, it's about three hundred thousand that we're bringing in from rooms, meals and alcohol.
Half that.
Half that, hundred and fifty thousand, uh, so just think of that comparison of a hundred and fifty thousand versus seven hundred and fifty thousand. And it combined, that means nine hundred thousand that would be available overall for those, for those needs. Um, and that's one thing I don't wanna put on the back of taxpayers in other senses, like their property tax. That just means uh property tax goes up, that means rent goes up for those people that are renting because their landlords are paying taxes, so. So with that, I just wanna ask council, um, we do have the sales option as one of the items for the change. Uh, in front of us, and we have spoken about the first option uh of letter C. And changing it for including the solely for streets, sidewalk reconstruction, capital equipment and or capital improvement needs. Uh, under section four oh nine, and that's pretty much what the language I believe would read. We still would wanna send that out to our attorney, and I'm just looking around to make sure that that's what council's intent would still be.
Yeah, option one is my preference.
Okay.
Yes.
Yep. Okay, and I believe we're at the end then of the section for charter changes. Um, is there anything else anyone else wanted to bring for anything for charter? If not, then um, Carol, since you have already crafted that, did that go out to Oliver?
Yes, yeah, what I will do is I will revise with the couple of uh things that we talked about tonight. And send it to him again, telling him to disregard or stop working on the first one and start working on the second one. He'll be, he'll be okay with that.
Just kidding.
Okay, well, thank you, and thank you for everyone for the input. I think we're at a good spot with that now, and I do, again, uh, the city clerk. Uh, for keeping on that, for us to keep on it, because it is important that we're making sure that we go through the details of those language changes.
Thank you.
So moving on to item nine D, this is the discussion on council priorities. It has my name because I put the item that was in the packet, but I wanna say I'm very thankful that that uh has worked with Steve. To get the item that was sent out uh later on, uh, it has a lot of green language on it, and I think, Steve, you have paper copies. So for those of you that are not here in person, council, um, what was in the packet? Steve um should have provided another email, that is, that document, the first three pages. Um, and those have green light, uh, green lettering added, which really provide dates to all of those items. So I I think that's helpful, because uh what I was hoping to do is do that same exercise. Uh, so it saves us one some time there. Uh, the question I did have for council though is, are there any items on the list? And really, and if you look at the packet, there's a lot of things that have already been completed, so you'd wanna focus on the first two pages in the packet. Um, or on that report that the manager just sent out, it's listed as three because there's, you know, additional language in there. Um, is there anything on the list that you feel like we should take off? Or items that we should put on, or you know, anything that should be prioritized above anything else that's already on there? And I I ask that now because we we have spent some time talking about priorities. Uh, and while you're looking over the green lettered language, uh, over the past two years. Uh, we have on our agendas, uh, had listed eighteen times discussion on priorities. Eleven of those were specific about council, six times were about committee priorities. Two times, we talked about strategic planning, one time along with the department heads. And so we're getting down to that point where this is just finalizing what we have for this year. We do have uh an RFP out for a strategic planner to come in to work with our priorities moving forward, and. Yeah, and then we have a list of items that we have already deferred that we would know that would be for uh consideration by a future council. Council real, is that your hand up?
Yeah, actually it is, on on two things, I see that I'm on for changes to lay out to the hall, Bill, Steve, Rick. I assume that I'm also on this because this has ADA compliance issues.
On, say that one again?
Um, I don't know what page I'm on, I think I'm on page two, council priorities, manager and other staff support required. Uh, infrastructure. Um, changes layout to city hall, Bill, Steve, Rick, rearrangement plan briefing, January eighteenth. Um, addressed bathroom and other ADA compliance issues and safety issues. Um, I'm just wondering if if there's a way that I can be on that because of those ADA issues as well?
Yeah, um. We actually have an internal um staff meeting tomorrow to review the. Review the the work that has been led by Rick but done by all of the department heads. Um, I don't know that we're getting uh. We're we're not at the point where we're speci- where we're addressing specific physical features or modifications. It's it's um holistic reorganization of uh department locations. Uh, consolidating departments so that all of the staff are in the same. Uh, work area as the department head, and then uh proposals as to how to use the the vacant space in the old police department. You're more than welcome to sit on that meeting, but I but I think it's premature, I think we will get there. But what we wanna do, frankly, we've been working on this for two years as time permits and as priorities permit and whatever. We're we're at the point where we're all anxious to try to move this ahead, and before we go very far. We need to work out internally, and I think we're at the two-yard line, wh-what the holistic uh plan is. And then once we agree at the department head level, uh, frankly, we're gonna review it with staff, but we'll also then review it with council. Let council be aware of what uh the staff recommendations are. Uh, in terms of organ, overall reorganization, then we have to move ahead in terms of the detailed. Uh, construction plans or or how we're gonna actually.
Yeah, like like my first thought's top of my head, it's like somebody came in who was, who couldn't go downstairs to his bathroom. Um, the gentleman's bathroom, um, it would be very difficult.
Yeah, no, that I understand.
Yeah.
But but.
That that's just, that's one thing.
In fact, we 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 have, we have addressed ADA mobility. Um, throughout the plan, uh, I'm not close enough to to speak to bathrooms, but.
That, that's just.
Yeah, but all that, you know, and and and. You know, depending on how much. I say this, it it sounds facetiously, but depending on how much money the council is willing to allocate to uh this. I mean, uh, we 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 may or may not be able to address bathroom relocations or whatever. Um, but I think it's still a little premature to to.
Okay.
Speak to that, we'll we'll get there, but we're not there yet.
All right, thank you, Steve.
Are there other questions from others? Councillor Stockwell?
I would like to add the housing plan to council priorities, I know we haven't discussed it yet.
So um, is that something that you would be bringing up for a discussion?
I know we'll be discussing it next week, but it does represent a priority of mine.
Okay, so I guess uh if we're discussing that housing, uh, on, I guess it's on page two on this for, under ARPA. Will be bringing up the housing programs, what would be different from the housing programs that you'd wanna?
It's just more, it's just broader than the bullets under here.
Okay. So a housing plan? And so should I put that as something with your name next to it though, for bringing up as at a next council meeting? Or a future council meeting?
Well, I think we're gonna discuss the plan that we developed at the next council meeting.
Okay, uh, just for clarification then, so the housing program does not equate the housing plan? Do you just want me to change the the wording in there for the housing program discussion to housing plan discussion?
No, never mind.
No, that's why I just wanted to make sure it wasn't something different.
No, it's nothing different.
Okay.
It was just saying the language is gonna stay the same or have?
The language will stay the same.
Okay. So councillor Booton?
So, you know, we talk about priorities and and I, I see the list and we keep on adding to these lists. This list and we keep on bogging down our staff. And then I get, I know I've been getting calls about adding four additional people on. Um, which is a result of us adding stuff to the priority list. And I, you know, I I have a priority. I would love to hear a list from the department heads of issues that they would like to see removed that council is constantly putting on them. Um, you know, that that might lessen their workload. I, it's, we've got a, you know, I, I don't, I guess I don't remember this ever. You know, happening in the past where we're just like bogging our staff down, and I. You know, whatever, I guess. Part of the old crew.
So councillor Booton, just to address that, Steve, was there anything that count, uh, department heads talked about that they didn't feel that was important? I do know that they have put things on there that are beyond the time period. So for example, DPW is looking at the excavation entrance to the railroad bed, that was something that was on the list for last year. But it, you know, Bill has it on there for June tenth of next year, or twenty twenty-two now, so of this year.
It's, I mean. That's one example, i- it it seems like such a simple project, and it and it basically is. But between, I mean. You know, COVID sometimes seems like a comfortable excuse, it's it's not. But I mean, COVID has seriously impacted our service, for DPW, for for everybody for that matter. Um, but but there is so much just operational uh things. That uh need to be done by our streets, water and sewer department. That uh some of these things fall into the nice-to-do category. Um, and uh, that, that's an example of one of them. Um, it 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 hasn't lagged this long because of a lack of understanding. Or desire to get it done, it just gets pushed aside on a day-to-day, week-to-week basis. And the only reason I, frankly, Bill said. June third, and I said, well, let's just say, shoot at the, you know, we sit here and and as staff. We, we try to make reasonable, good faith. Projections of when any task needs to be done, whether it's on this list or anything else. And and I know when I do it, and I think when the other department has to do it, really try to say. Okay, uh, can I get this done in the next two weeks or the next month or whatever? And uh, the the, the reality is, try to make good estimates. And and as we sit here and say, I'm gonna get that done in two weeks, what we don't know is what's gonna come in the door tomorrow. The day after tomorrow, and whatever, they just put us on a ninety-degree, and all of a sudden, that good faith estimate goes goes south. Because uh, uh, these things come in. An excellent example is Rick, who's trying to do four hundred and thirty-seven things at once. But since November, with all, with all the things that have been on his list. Things that have come in um, out of the, out of the clear blue, has been a change in the insurance program. Which is a horrendously time-consuming effort for Rick. Um, the um, OSHA ETS, um, and there was one other that I had uh on my mind. Um, that I can't remember, but those things weren't on the radar screen November first. Uh, and all of a sudden, they've probably, the, those two or three have probably occupied fifty to seventy-five percent of Rick's time. Um, that he wasn't planning on, uh, Rick, you can correct me if I'm wrong on the estimates, but I think the point is still. And so that happens to different, to different degrees, different magnitudes to to all of us, so. Um, that's just an example of, so that's how some of these things slide.
So and uh, just to follow up on that comment, uh, the timeframes in green, I would assume that these are the best intent.
Best intent, yeah. I use the carefully crafted word target.
And and to add to Steve's comment, you know, Steve was asking me today, you know, what do you think a reasonable timeframe is? And I said, if it's all I had to do, probably a week, week and a half. But in all reality, I know it's not all I have to do, so, you know, I was saying, month, month and a half, and Steve's like, is that realistic? And we get, we keep, I check him, he checks me, he checks Bill, we all check each other. Because we all wanted to get it done yesterday, we want all this stuff off our desk and done. Because, I mean, this is something I've been working on, and Lucas, you and Michael, no, I've been working on this since two thousand thirteen. When I started with the city, and Steve has been behind me the whole time, it's just one of those things that. Every time I sit down to go through it, things change, and we're modifying it, and it's going to be that way. But we're finally at a place where I think we can finalize it, I'm close to the operations manual. Um, and you know, I'm hopeful that I can get it done before that, but, you know, in all reality, that's, that's our best guess at this point.
I would, I would add one other caveat. I went through this with the department heads, um, uh, spent much of the day doing this because it just came down to the wire. But uh, the one thing I haven't done, we 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 picked, tried to set individual target dates. That were realistic for each item. Uh, and then I, and those dates are dates that uh I would intend to bring or have staff bring those forward to council. What I haven't done yet and I need to do is now sit down and look at council agendas for the next three months and see how these stack up. Um, and you know, if we end up with twelve items on one agenda and nothing on the next, and then the date may slide only to facilitate agendas. But that that reconciliation still has to be done.
Councillor Wazizak?
Yeah, I just want to adjust quickly, and forgive me if I misheard something, but you know, Rick just mentioned that there's a project that he's been working on since twenty thirteen. Uh, and we all know, I think it's universally accepted that Rick is doing multiple jobs. So I just, to, with all due respect, to imply that the reason for more positions for the city is necessary. Is due to council micromanagement or council stacking of projects on staff, um, it just is not accurate.
So any other? Comments or prioritization that any councillors would like to do with the?
I think, you know, there isn't a councillor here that wouldn't say our priorities aren't what's urgent. The, you know, like, doing the excavate the entrance to the railroad bed, that's very nice, it's not as important as doing the crosswalks. Now, I don't think that there's any intention on anyone's part to say, oh, you should do these pretty projects first and put away the stuff that's essential. And also, you know, Berry has lost significant population. That's gonna take an investment to change it, it's just gotta, that's why the four positions. That's why we do things differently, because the policy so far hasn't got us to a place where Berry City is growing. We've gotta make changes, it is just gonna be painful. But hopefully, I mean, I don't think anybody wants to make people. But hopefully, I mean, I don't think anybody wants to make people suffer at work. Some suffering at work, of course, is inevitable, but you know, I don't think, that's why they call it work. That's.
Councillor Hemrick?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I look at this list and A, I couldn't agree more. Councillor Stockwell, that was very well said. And at 1.9%, I think that's a pretty remarkable accomplishment that city staff and this council got the 1.9% projected, um, tax rate increase for the FY 23 budget. So, and, and, uh, and, and I, it's just, it's a remarkable place to be. And to be able to get so many win wins in that budget is important. But I look at this list and I'm so impressed by all the things that have been done. Uh, it's hard not to be impressed and I think everybody should feel really good about all the great work that's been done in a hell of a two years. I think, and it has been a hell and, and, and it's not over yet. I mean, I think these, these waves of 90 degree turns are going to continue to come if people don't get vaccinated and show that they care about their neighbors, um, and their coworkers. Um, uh, as I'm thinking about, you know, what the next few months, uh, I see a lot of stuff listed for January and February, including a lot of ordinance reviews. And I'm curious if there's, um, some stuff that might be able to drop off and some stuff that this council might say is essential. And that's where, uh, this, this list, um, although it's been helpful, I feel like it's been a struggle to know what's the most important thing on this list as a councillor and I don't know, maybe staff feel that way from time to time too. And I'm hoping that the strategic planning exercise gets everybody to the point where there's a solid agreement these are the most important things, these are the must haves. And these nice to do things are important, they're in the hopper. Um, but, but we're going to focus on the biggest challenges facing the city. We're going to solve problems and we're going to, we're going to change the course of population loss and, and, uh, increase tax rates. And, um, that outpace our grand list growth. So that's it. But Mayor, you think, do you have a list of things you're thinking about for, for January and February?
So what's on here is again, there's a lot and I agree with you. And I think for the ordinance review, it probably, um, would need to be just a presentation at first because the first and second meetings, if there were to be changes, uh, that would take future conversations. And on this list, there's one, two, three, four, five, five, and then just a discussion on the winter parking ban because that comes up every year. Uh, it goes into effect in November, but lately we haven't been getting snow until December. Uh, and then on the other side, is all the snow gone by April? Uh, and that question always comes up on, on that for the dates for one. And the other one is, uh, you know, if you look at other municipalities, they do parking on the one side of the street one week and then the other the next week, something like that to reduce snow removal. And, and so those questions just continue to come up. We're already in that time period, so that's one, for example, we could probably wait until April, uh, to have that conversation instead of a February 15th because, you know, we would have, it'd be fresh on people's minds. And so the other ones, I don't have a priority, but I think to councillor Booton's point, if there are items on here, and I guess it's a lot of what a lot of councillors have been saying. Uh, if staff have a priority that they want to put to some of these, you know, what can and can't make it? Um, and what would overload an agenda? We've seen that happen before too, where we're talking about way too much tonight. Um, and then we can just, uh, know that this is a target and push off the ones that aren't the most important to a, a future date.
I'd be, I'd be happy to work with department heads and I mean, I could look at this list and, and give you what I think of the top five.
That would be good.
Yeah.
Top five are where we'll focus and everybody understands we'll get to the others if and when we can. But here's where our focus will be. Quite honestly, that would, that would be huge in avoiding our time getting fragmented and siphoned off so that we can't focus if, if we could organize, uh, the priorities so that we can focus on a manageable number. I think that would have huge results.
Well, I think also, sorry, that some of us have special, special, I can't say that word today, that we could also assist with some of these. And somebody could say especially, I guess, that we could assist with some of these as well and loan our time out and assist.
Yeah, and in the past, it's true with the ordinances, we had a ordinance review group similar to what was with the charter. And, um, it's something that not all of us are specialists in, but if we can do a little bit of research and do some of the homework, it doesn't mean it's the final language. It means that we've done a piece of that, so it doesn't rely all on staff. Uh, it's kind of like what, um, I'd say Jeff is doing with the tree ordinance. He's working with the tree stewardship committee on that revision. So he's using some of the resources that he can to make sure that it comes back before council.
I, I don't want to, I don't want to uh, sound unappreciative. But I, I think it's hard for, for council, for councillors to work with staff efficiently. Because, um, as, as staff, we're constantly figuring out when we're going to meet to do this, to do that, do that. I, I mean, we're doing a lot of stuff spontaneously. And councillors understandably just don't have that flexibility to come in at 10 o'clock on Tuesday morning for a meeting. Uh, we're going to be meeting and, and we can't, we can't, we can't work around councillor's schedules. So, um, while the offer is appreciated, uh, it's, it's councillors aren't available as staff are. So it, it ends up to be more difficult for us if we've got to try to, uh, you know, work around committee meetings or work around councillor's schedules or stuff like that. Um, I think there are times when we can specifically reach out to a councillor for, uh, a specific item or whatever. But I think the suggestion of having councillors work with staff to move some of this stuff ahead, I don't think it's realistic or practical. And I think the real way to get it done is for, let the staff do the legwork, come to council, make a presentation, recommendations, and let council provide their feedback at that time. So, uh, I think it's, again, just looking at ways to make moving stuff more efficient.
I'm just putting the offer out there.
Yeah, I feel, and I appreciate that. I don't, I'm not rejecting it at all. And I think what we need to try to be alert to, is there a time and a, and an issue or an item that we can reach out to a councillor that we think can, can realistically provide some assistance?
Right, we're there, we're here to help as well.
And I, we appreciate that.
Yeah, and maybe as you're working on that top five, if there are areas where staff feel like they would like assistance.
Yeah.
You know, that can be provided back to us.
So in the, in the interest of providing realistic projections, I'll try to come back with that top five list in a couple of weeks.
Be great.
Just curious, we order acorns?
So.
It's not really an acorn, it's a something else.
Yeah, no, so, uh, along Main Street, we have the lamp posts and on the side of them are where the banners are. So where you actually put the banner on, what is put on, instead of at a bowl, it's called an acorn. Uh, and it's just because it looks like an acorn. So.
Good to know.
Yeah, and, uh, the reason why it was on here is, um, of course, the banners, as you go down Main Street, you'll see that some of them, they, they flap and some of them have fallen off. Uh, and when they fall off, especially in this weather, they're brittle, they get taken by a snowplow. Uh, so, and they cost money. And if we can get the acorns on there, it's just helpful. So it was something that was brought up, um, by the groups that do help put up the things on the, the light posts. Um, so we, we did mention the winter parking ban, that was one of the questions that you had on here, which can be, sounds like everyone's fine with deferring that until after, uh, the ban is out of effect anyway. Um, the food vendor policy, it was dropped for being an ordinance, uh, but I think it's still one of the oldest policies that haven't been revised. So there's for me, no real priority on it. I think, um, as we go through that process again this year with vendor licensing, there might be something that pops up. Uh, but I think Janet's still on there. Um, it really was, there were questions even back when, uh, Rich Murray was a councillor and it was addressing items such as even the ice cream man with the, uh, the truck, the ice cream truck that goes around and he has the, the sound. Is the sound become?
Hour after hour.
And, you know, is that an issue? You know, are those things that we have to address? So, uh, I think that's some of the reasons why, you know, that stays on here.
So it's back to an ordinance review.
Nope.
I mean, a, a policy review.
Yeah, just to see if there's anything that needs to be revised. And again, I don't have a timeline on that. It's, it's more that I know it was an outstanding item for, from a couple of years ago. Um, to note, under the council priorities manager and other staff, the tax increment financing plan, there's an item, uh, the third one on there says request legislative extension S33. We just mentioned that tonight. So I just wanted to note that because, uh, it's now in our legislators' hands. So I'll put a date next to that and it's something that we have asked for and hopefully, uh, we'll follow, follow up on it. And then on the staff items, the first one for Berrytown Water and Sewer Agreements, it has done at the end, but I just want to note that that's probably just because you're mentioning for the budget.
Budget, that's, yes, I sure, it's the budget.
So, and we'll have those further conversations, which, um, it sounds like February 24th on, on or around that day, um, is when we'd have more of a conversation on the structure, uh, which then if there's more, uh, feedback needed, that's why councillor Sean Bell and I would be hopefully included in that, similar to with ADA items and councillor Reel would be helping with that with the, uh, city hall reconstruction stuff. So with that, are there any other questions? And of course, I'm going to have the late submissions here. Um, just to note, we have a complaint form currently on the website. Uh, we received a lot of the data from it. Um, in the past three years, there was 39 entries, 20, let me restate that, 35, one year, 29 and 29 in the past two years. So there's not a lot of data that's actually coming in. If you look at the data, it's not really complaints even. Uh, there's some times where people are giving compliments. Uh, there's times where there might be actually an issue that's coming up at a council meeting that those are the, the notes that are received there. Uh, so speaking with Bill and, uh, Steve, you can chime in on this earlier. Um, really, uh, we think it might be the time to finally switch over to C Click Fix as the way to start bringing in some of that information. And if there are items that don't fall directly within the, the streets piece of it, uh, there's very few comments that are coming that probably could be handled by the phone calls that are out, or emails that are coming to city, uh, the city manager's office anyway. So if nobody is opposed, this would allow us to use, uh, the beginning of the year for the data collection starting to come through C Click Fix rather than that form that's there. Bernadette, I see your hand is up.
Hi, yes, are you talking about the citizen feedback?
This, yeah, the citizen feedback, which is called commonly our complaint form, but citizen feedback is a better term because as noted, a lot of it isn't complaints.
Right. Oh, I really like that and I'm sorry if you take it off. Well, I'll just have to get to know the new manager, I guess.
It's really not removing the intent, it, it's really just using another tool. Uh, part of the reasoning is, it, a lot of the things that come in that are complaints, uh, it doesn't really capture, uh, it has with the date that it was entered, but it doesn't have the date that it was completed. So it's hard to tell how long it takes for items to be reconciled. Uh, and so really, we're just trying to make sure that there's a better tool in place moving forward.
I understand that, I just don't have the app. I don't have a smartphone, so I will just get to know the new city manager. Thank you.
Janet, your hand's up too?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just, I just wanted to ask you to repeat. Did I hear you correctly saying that you would remove the, the complaint form online that is found under code enforcement? And replace it with C Click Fix?
What I'm saying is the complaints that are coming in that are to be filed with C Click Fix, we can start taking in the information from those. Um, if there are information coming in for code enforcement through that form, um, the information that Jody has provided me hasn't shown that there's anything for code enforcement on the form that I'm talking about.
Right, that's because I manage that and make sure that code enforcement gets those complaints and, uh, promptly delete them because we use the free version of, um, that software. So we're bound by only so many things to be stored. Um, so if you ever want the statistics for that, I'm, I'm happy to, to dredge that up for you. But, um, we, code enforcement probably gets three, on average, three complaints a month through that form alone.
Okay, so I'm not sure why we're deleting a list of complaints. And I guess I follow up with Steve on that.
The software can only store so much. So at some point it has to be deleted or moved off of that software platform to us. Do, do you understand what I'm saying?
Well, in part, but I mean, there, there should be a copy of. There should be one list that has all of the, the information that's coming in and, and through that form. So I don't know if it's all being copied somewhere else or not.
Yeah, that I don't know. I just know, um, my little part is to make sure code enforcement gets to see that and it's uploaded into their software so they can start managing that complaint.
Bill, your hand is up too?
So the, the, the focus, um, that I had been looking at was, um, that, that citizen feedback form. And the fact that as a system, basically it's intake only and it doesn't have any tracking system for follow up. And that will exist inside C Cliff, C Click Fix. And we can take telephone calls or emails and we can migrate them into C Click Fix just as easily as we could put them into the citizen feedback form. So, um, it won't require people to have to use C Click Fix. Bernie, you'll be able to reach out to us without any problem. Send us an email and, and we can input it into that, that platform. But the platform would actually allow the city to see, um, one, that it got assigned, two, that it was completed or not, and three, to start developing some performance statistics on how we respond. So it, although I wasn't in a rush to, to try to deploy it across multiple departments, um, I still see it as primarily a DPW tool. But there's no reason that when we look at the, the, um, citizen feedback form, that the count of issues that come in there couldn't actually be transferred by email, um, and, and made to work and still tracked in C Click Fix, that's all.
Yeah, Rick?
So I just wanted to clarify, um, to make sure I understand as being the guy that's going to be the one figuring out what to take off the web. So code enforcement has a code enforcement complaint form under the fire section, which I believe is what Janet is getting. The form that you're talking about, I believe, Mr. Mayor, is the citizen feedback form, which is on the contact us page, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so they're two separate forms. So when Jody gets a phone call or she gets something that comes into the citizen feedback form, currently what she's doing or what Nick did or what I did is we would refer them to the code enforcement complaint form on the fire department page and have them fill it out or depending on their timeframe or their, um, capabilities, we would just take their information and fill it out for code enforcement. So that gets tracked by Janet and then it goes to code enforcement. And I believe Joe might be able to answer or Doug, but I believe they put it into, um, a tracking system down there and follow up on them.
So Rick, I just want to say thank you for clarifying that so that we know that it is two different record sets. Um, and what is being managed for code enforcement is separate than, uh, what is coming in for the citizen complaint. So, um, that citizen form would be C Click Fix. And if, if something cannot be entered through that, as Bill just noted, um, there are other ways to call or, or email where that can be entered as well.
So, so I guess I'm, I'm the contrarian this evening, but I see those as three different forms with three different levels of, uh, accessibility or user convenience to the, to the residents. The, the, not everything that comes in on the citizen feedback form is code related. There's, I don't know, I'm taking a wild guess, but I would say half of the stuff that comes in on the citizen feedback form, which is accessible, easily accessible on the website, are complaints about miscellaneous, uh, issues or whatever, not necessarily code enforcement. And Jody will send those right out to the appropriate department head. I mean, I'll get a number, I don't know, two or three a month. And I try to respond to those within twenty-four to forty-eight hours. Rick and Janet clarified that the code enforcement form in in the fire department is is for a very specific purpose. And sometimes if people use a citizen feedback form for a code complaint, I think maybe Rick was referring to this, we'll tell them to go into the code enforcement form and and fill out the complaint. In fact, it's been hard to get out of the habit when somebody has called in the past with a code enforcement complaint to not say, okay, I'll get ahold of code enforcement and follow up. The right response is, okay, we have a form for that. Go onto this website, you fill it out, because there's information that that needs to be on there that I can't provide or or any any staff member can't provide, and and get the get the user to use the right form. And then C Click Fix, in my mind, has a, I I think Bill feels it has a broader application, and I think it does, but I I think that the people who tend to use the citizen feedback form are likely not going to use C Click Fix for the types of complaints they might have. They will for, they will for infrastructure complaints and stuff like that when they become familiar with C Click Fix and get the app. So I I would be a proponent of, you know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I would say let's just keep the three, three avenues of citizen input that we have and that gives more convenience, more flexibility to the residents. Might do sense.
That's for real? So, yeah, so I consider a citizen feedback form, a citizen feedback form, and not a complaint form. I don't know, I'm old school. And a complaint form, a complaint form. I mean, you you label a feedback form, a feedback form, I'm going to give you feedback, you label it a complaint form when you complain. And I've played with C Click Fix in other towns, and that's for infrastructure, that's not for a complaint.
That was my
Yeah, exactly. I'm just reiterating what Steve just said. And, you know, if I'm going, I'm going to give you feedback on feedback, I'm going to give you a complaint on a complaint form and infrastructure on a C Click Fix.
Let me, let me, but being the, being a recipient of a lot of citizen feedback, it rises to the level of pretty pointed complaints. So regardless of what it's called, if people got a complaint, they'll, they'll, that's where you'll
Oh, I I understand because I I'm I'm with you on it. I I I get those too.
Yeah, but as good, but as as the mayor said, I mean, but people also use it to, you know, give us high fives.
Yeah, so I'm just being, being, you know, very literal when it comes to things labeled. So that's where my confusion, I'm like, oh, it's a feedback form. It's for feedback. That's basically what I had to say.
So I see two more hands up. Deputy Chief Feldworth will take you first.
Just a point of clarification. When Janet downloads the form and takes it off from there, she attaches it to the parcel that's in question. And then it gets the feet, gets sent to the inspectors, and then they they go and and answer the form. So that form doesn't disappear. It it's still, it's attached directly to the the address, and then that becomes a permanent record. And then when the complaint is acted upon and they do the inspection, it's in result to the complaint form. So the complaint form has some very specific questions on it that curtails to exactly what the inspectors are looking for. And one of it is actually a feedback to the person that made the complaint. So.
Yeah, no, thank you for that. And I I think, I think, Rick, for understanding that there was two different items that we were talking about there. Just to reiterate, but part of this comes from my concern in my day job. When we have too many intake processes, people don't know where to go, what one to click on and submit it. So if we do keep all three, then that's going to just be something that staff will need to be aware of. People are going to enter complaints in the complaint, what is called a complaint form. And it might be for infrastructure things versus for code enforcement. And vice versa, it could be something for citizen feedback that's received and something else. So we'll just have to be aware of that. Bill?
So so I think my my objective was simply to try to generate a single source for DPW, and I can still do that. It'll mean making sure that I migrate things from other sources. I'd like to have just one complete data source that I could do measurement with. And I can still accomplish that, but I regardless of whether we have one or three, the idea for me was just to try to get good records that people could see what we're doing. And it it sounds like that possible. I just need to make sure that I'm picking up stuff from the feedback form. And and I'd offer that I'd stop calling our our responses from citizens as complaints and decide we'd call them concerns, and that way I could take away the negativity associated.
Thank you. Rick?
Just to follow up on what Bill was saying. I know traditionally, anything that's come in to the manager's office on the citizen feedback form, if it's for planning, it gets sent to Janet. If it's for DPW, it gets sent. Traditionally, I believe, at least when I did it and when Nick did it, it went to Debbie. And so it may be just as simple as as making sure Debbie can get it in C Click Fix bill to just keep that data flow happening. And I know in regards to what Steve said, we have traditionally said to people, you can go on to the website under Fire Department, and you can click on the code enforcement. And then we've asked them to fill it out. But I'd say seven out of eight times, we basically just take the information, fill it out while we're on the phone for them so that they don't have to go back in and do it. Because it's just, we're on the phone with them anyway. We just ask the questions. We'll take anything that they've already given us, and we'll just move it over and and send it to code enforcement. If they have the ability, then great, and they want to do it, great. But I know traditionally, we've offered to just fill it out while they're on the phone with us, so.
So it sounds like we will have, oh, Bernadette, I see your hands up.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the citizen feedback, it says feedback type, comments, concerns, suggestions, compliments, questions. And then you click which department it's for. And then you describe your feedback and your name and contact information. And I understand, I think I understand what Bill is saying is that he has, for DPW, there hasn't been a way to track, something comes in, but there isn't a way to track to whom it gets sent, when it's addressed, and how it's addressed. And that's what he wants to do with the fix click, whatever thing. And I'm willing to give up the citizen feedback. This is my personal preference because I love the citizen feedback. And just, you know, send an email so that we could have better tracking. Because when I say there's a bunch of broken sidewalk here, or when we were out walking, somebody's roof slid into this, into the street. I came home, I use the citizen feedback. Bill never really saw that stuff or in a timely manner. And I think the Click Fix app probably will be more effective in getting things done. And that's, even though I like the citizen feedback, I think that I would support Bill's position.
Thank you. And I think, just to clarify, I think where we're landing on is, it doesn't sound like anything is going to go away. Yeah, if it does come in through that citizen form, it's going to be input into C Click Fix for Bill, so you can do that tracking. Similarly, if it comes in for code enforcement, it'll be entered in in that section too. We'll just have to note that the citizen form isn't something to track items with overall. It's one that's just an input that's being used by the other departments. And and it might be something that the manager then can let us know about the the good comments too, which I'm sure somewhere. Okay, the only other things I was going to mention, because it's not listed on the plan. We do have our strategic plan, which the RFP is out, we're having that process. But we are also coming to town meeting day. And I don't know, we could probably select that person for, as part of this council. But just thoughts on having the actual process occur after town meeting day. So the, whatever the future council is to sit down and meet with that person, they would be the newly elected officials. We'd have all of the pieces in place for that next council. And I just wanted to see if that's okay with everybody here.
You you took the thoughts right out of my mind. I've been thinking about that. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Does anybody have any concern with that? I mean, we'll have at least three of the same people. We have a lot of the documentation already in place. And we would have whoever's here to to make those decisions.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. And I think that, like, you know, if there is a, if there is an outgoing counselor that feels very strongly that about something, they'd be more than welcome to leave a note or, you know, submit something via email and writing saying, hey, while the new council goes through this process, keep this in mind.
Council Hammerick?
Yeah, I think it's good that the process rolls out after town meeting with the the new council. But I also think it it's important to keep the process moving forward. And I'm not sure if holding off on selecting a consultant to do the work is is necessarily wise because I think that document's going to be a real selling point for a potential new manager to know that there's a, there's a consensus playbook among the council that would be onboarding them and that they know, they they would know what their expectations are going to be for that that first year in that area that where they need to focus their priorities. So I would keep it moving so that that document is ready and in place by by July.
No, I I think we're saying the same thing. I think that we would have a selection by this council. And then hopefully, the dates where we are starting to have that discussion is March, April. And that's the same timeline where maybe there's a selection for a new manager. And if that's the case, then that new person would have these fresh documents that are in hand and ready for them to go.
Yeah, just to be clear about the timeline. I've been coordinating with Bill, Janet Carroll, who were doing the principal review. The internal target is to have the selection committees, or screening committees' recommendations by the end of next week. And my plan is to put it on the agenda for the eighteenth. If we remember, what we said is we're going to shortlist the three. We can give you the staff recommendation, but present the recommendation and the three top proposals to the council, and the council may take a couple of weeks to make a decision. So we're we're not slowing the process down at all. The intent is to keep it going. Calendar probably dictates that it would be dealt with with a new council, but this council can make the selection.
And and then just the last one, I promise. Since it is the new year, we have what we've been using for crime statistics. We get the monthly report. Our acting chief, Eastman, has been looking at how those data elements have been calculated because we've always noted it's a little bit different than what we see on the federal level when that comes back. He's going to make changes starting as of January first that hopefully will match a little bit better. So we are basically going to see very similar data to what comes out in those reports later. And so I'll give you the updated information for comparison because it's been the same data for the past four years, about four years. But moving forward, it should more closely match with what those reports would be from the federal level. And I just wanted to note that because that will be coming out here soon. As it is the beginning of a new year. So are any other questions or comments on this council priority item? And if not, I don't think we have an executive session for anything. And that puts us squarely at roundtable. So I'll go online here. Council Hammerick, do you have anything?
Just a quick note that the manager search committee is meeting on Thursday. So things are moving along there. If anybody has any questions, you're more than welcome to reach out to me or the the chair. I'm sure Rich Mori would more than welcome that, but things are moving along.
Thank you. Council Booton? Council Reel?
Just at the homelessness task force meeting meets tomorrow at seven, we are hybrid. And we would love more people to join. Please get vaccinated if you can, and please wear a mask, and I'll pass.
Council Sean Bell?
I'll pass.
And I forgot, Councilor Wazizak is online today. So, Council Wazizak, is there anything you have to add?
Yeah, sure. There wasn't, I was gonna, I was just gonna say pass too, but since I have the platform, it's a sad month for, you know, theater kids, which overlaps almost directly with Golden Girls fans as the late, great Betty White passed away at the age of ninety-nine. And that's it.
Okay. Council Stockwell?
Another coming up on the Saturday anniversary of January sixth, and that is on my mind. Place that the country went to. And I also want to just to say how grateful I am for Aldrich Library and the homelessness committee for creating warming shelter. I just think that's a wonderful thing. Thank you.
Thank you. On Council Wazizak's note, we also had those NFL fans know John Madden passed away. And then also on New Year's Day, Dan Reeves, who is another prolific coach in the NFL, had passed away. And so I agree, Betty White, she's she's really is a national treasure. I I follow a lot of her comedy. I I didn't so much the older TV until now there's this thing called MeTV, and and you can watch shows from the forties and fifties pretty easily. And and there were some shows that I didn't realize she was even a part of that you, you know, you can reflect on, so.
Oh, and and just a, just one last thing on on Betty White. She has a phenomenal book, an autobiography called If You Ask Me, Though You Probably Won't. It's just a phenomenal, phenomenal autobiography that takes, that shows her transformation as a, you know, young girl in Illinois and early Los Angeles, the early days of film, radio, and television, all the way up through her, you know, recent successes in charity work with the L.A. Zoo. So If You Ask Me, But You Probably Won't by Betty White is a phenomenal book if you're looking to learn more about Betty or the film industry and film and television in general.
Rick, did you have something else you wanted to add to?
I just wanted to piggyback on what Teddy was saying. There's a whole push on social media right now where if people want, they're asking people to donate five dollars to a local humane society in her name. And so it's a huge push. They're basically tracking it nationwide until the seventeenth, which would have been her hundredth birthday.
So if you want to make a donation, the Central Vermont Humane Society, that is the same organization that works with the Kitty Corner Cafe, actually, to get those pets adopted. And speaking with businesses, we did have a ribbon cutting today, so welcome aboard officially to Pearl Street Pizza. Something that, you know, if we didn't have that Pearl Street project, probably wouldn't have ever resulted in a pizza place or a store, especially with the name, I mean, kind of goes well together. Some other notes, just for the budget, I think we have one more item that we do need to at least discuss. We found out through the Vermont leagues and cities and towns, we we have on our budget sheet, and you can check this, one cent that we've always collected for errors and omissions. And it's something that they state is not something that we're supposed to have. So we'll want to address that one way or another, either if that is to be another cent that comes off our tax rate, or if there's something else that we want to address with that. Either way, it's positive in one sense. On the other side, if there are errors and omissions, that's something that would come out of our general fund directly, so.
If I could just piggyback on that, speaking of the budget, so I have on the agenda for the eighteenth what I'm calling a final review of the budget and or adjustments. I forget exactly what I what I called it, but that would be the one last session to go over any final refinements or questions or whatever about the budget in order to set it up for the town meeting warning on the twenty-fifth, which is the day you have, the last day you have to approve the budget. So I just want to let you know there'll be one more session, whether it's ten minutes or two hours, to to go through the budget one last time, have any final discussions, and then uh, have any final discussions and then tee it up for the formal vote on the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, and I, I think it'll be closer to the ten minutes.
Yeah, I, I
I'm not expecting anything out of the, the ordinary at that time, but, but you never know. These meetings that were uh, short on the agenda lasted a very long time.
This, this is a meeting that uh, looked like a very short agenda. Here we are, three hours later.
Yeah, but I think it was good.
Yes, all I'm saying is you can't tell the length of the meeting by the size of the agenda.
Yeah. Um, down to the last two, one is, um, we talked about funding from the Semper Bond Fund uh, to supplant the things like VYCC for river access. So that'll be an agenda item. I don't know which one, but coming up, just to see what we want to do. Uh, one idea was actually using it as uh, possibly a grant fund for all three of the main items that came out of the community visit process. And having it there so it's available. And, and really it's just making sure that they have earmarked funds for anything that's needed. Um, don't know what that is per se, but we can have that discussion at a later meeting. And the last one, and I'll save the details for, you know, when it's closer to town meeting day, but I just wanted to let everyone publicly know that um, I'm not planning to run for reelection. Um, so uh, people do have time. If they do want to run for the position, uh, they have time to collect those names. I'm also here for anyone that has questions about the position. Um, I do love this job. I actually love everything that happened tonight. We went through all the details that we needed to, leading up to town meeting day. Uh, which, which is great. And, and I'm glad at exactly where we are. So um, I just want to say thank you to everyone. Um, and again, I'll have more details for the, the thank yous and the, the kudos closer to town meeting day. So I don't need to do that twice. With that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hey, thank you very much. We are adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Night out.
Happy new year.
Happy new year.
Just hope it's better than the last two.
Oh, yes.
But it's not what it's
It's not, yeah.